All right, good evening. Today is Thursday, January 25th, 2024, and the time is now 6:30 PM. I will now call the regular meeting of the District 191 Board of Education to order, and welcome to those of you who are in the audience watching and to those of you online watching. Director Alt, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the great public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Director Werbe, second by Director Chester. Is there any discussion on the matter? All those in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. All right, so first on our agenda tonight is the Athletics and Activities Recognitions. I'd like to invite Athletics Director Kevin Kleiner to the podium to join us in celebrating our students' accomplishments so far this year. Welcome, and thank you for joining us to share a little bit about these outstanding students.
Thank you Board Chair Miller, Superintendent Battle, and members of the school board. I appreciate the opportunity to share some of the wonderful accomplishments our students in District 191. Each of the people we'll honor tonight will recognize at the state or national level in... I think I'm a little too tall for this, so I'm gonna adjust this. Here we go. "I'm amazed by the talent, dedication, and character of our students. Show as they participate in activities and athletics throughout the year. They represent themselves, their peers, and our community in such positive light. I'm proud of all their accomplishments. One thing to note tonight, we'll be celebrating accomplishments from last year's spring season as well as this fall, last fall they just occurred. While this first recognition is a little unique since it doesn't involve a student qualifying for the high school competition, we thought that a student who will be competing at the international level as a curler with Team USA definitely deserves to be honored." With that, we introduce our first honoree, Kenna Ponzio, who is representing Team USA at the Youth Olympics this winter. Unfortunately, Kenna and her family are unable to be here tonight because they are in South Korea. However, we did receive an update today from Kenna's dad. Kenna and her team finished in fifth place. It was an amazing run and such an incredible experience. Kenna, sophomore who's enrolled in District 191's Virtual Academy, and her teammates traveled to Denver Curling Club in early September and won the U.S. Junior Olympic Trials. Thanks to that first-place finish, as mentioned, Kenna had the opportunity to compete for Team USA at the 2024 Youth Olympic Games in Ganoa, Providence, South Korea. Kenna started curling with her uncle and cousin when she was seven or eight years old and started competing in fifth grade, traveling to tournaments around the Midwest. The next year, she began in school at Eagle Ridge Middle School and during that time competed in Nationals at the Chaska Curling Club. She later placed third in her region at U-18 Nationals in Indiana. Now, thanks to 191 Virtual Academy and the flexibility it offers, Kenna is able to advance as a curler and represent the U.S. at the Youth Olympic Games. How amazing is that? Team USA Coach Chase Senate said, "Kenna is an outstanding example of hard worker, or an outstanding hard worker. Dedicates hours every day to train for curling, whether it be drills on the ice or watching elite teams compete, to learn their strategies. Being an athlete is a commitment, and Kenna's drive to perform surpasses the threshold of competing for fun. Kenna is committed to being the best athlete she can be, and her hard work continues to pay off in multiple facets, including earning her berth as Team USA for the 2024 Youth Olympic Winter Games. Congratulations once again to Kenna, her teammates, and coaches on all their accomplishments." All right, our next honorees represent Blaze Track and Field. Albert and Carly, if you want to come up and join me?
Kevin, is it track mixed or cross-country?
It's cross.
Oh, I got, I got track and field on my list. What do you got? What do you got?
It was cross-country.
They're already here.
All right, they're fast. We can make them run again. Much faster than I ever was. Here we go. Congratulations to Albert Owenny and Carly Lamott, who qualified for state track and field meet last spring as a sophomore and freshman respectively. Additionally, Albert got on the medal stand top nine in the boys' 400 meters. Now a junior, Albert qualified for state by taking second in the 400 meter in the Section III AAA Meet last June. He finished with a time of 48.65 seconds. At the Minnesota State High School Class AAA State Track and Field Meet also in June, Albert placed fifth in the 400-meter run, finishing with a time of 49.49. Albert also set a new school record for the boys' 400 meter with a time of 48.36 at prelims. Coach Cambradenom said that Al said this about Albert. "The 2023 track season was a surprising breakout for Albert. It was his choice to run the 400 meters during the first meet. Not a typical race for athletes to volunteer to run, the most difficult one in track. After placing first, all of our coaches knew he had something special in our program. He was also part of the 4x100, the 4x400 teams that both finished in third place in sections. Albert helped define our team and season from start, from the start, both competitively and academically. Albert is an amazing, hard-working student athlete with a high GPA. Our school and program are lucky to have him set a high standard for our student athletes." On the girls' side, Carly placed second at sections in the 1600-meter run with a time of 5 minutes, 16 seconds, or 16.06. Still getting used to saying all those numbers together. Qualifying for the state competition. At the state competition, Carly placed 12th with a time of 5 minutes, 12 seconds, .01. Coach Abigail Atkins said, "Last year as a ninth grader, get this, Carly played both high school softball and competed on the track and field team during her spring season. Athletes can rarely pull off two sports in the same season because of the double schedule is so demanding. Carly's hard work, focus, and determination as an athlete paid off. Carly has natural, natural running ability, but the consistent effort she puts in, especially when it gets tough, is a quality that sets Carly apart and has helped her achieve exciting success in both track and cross-country. We are so excited what the spring holds for her." Once again, congrats to Albert and Carly.
One, two, three. One more, one, two, three. Thank you.
All right, next up is Blaze Cross Country. Those student athletes could come on up, join me. Now a sophomore this school year, Carly Lamott. And Liam Merrill, who is unable to be here tonight, and Senior Quinn Haas qualified for the, for state at the Class AAA Competition at the Section III AAA Meet held October 26. Liam finished 13th in the boys' competition with a time of 16 minutes, 40 seconds, while Quinn ended up in 16th with a time of 16 minutes, 44 seconds. Carly placed first in the girls', get that first place, in the girls' 500-meter race with a time of 18:42. At the Class AAA State Meet on November 4th, Carly ended up in 19th overall in the girls' race with a time of 18 minutes, 57 seconds. The previous year, she placed 60th overall at state, so this was an amazing accomplishment and improvement for Carly. Coach Charlie Burnham said this about Carly. "Having qualified for state last year, Carly came into the season with some pretty high expectations. In typical Carly fashion, she absolutely shattered what everyone thought was possible. This year, Carly wasn't just a faster athlete, she was a more confident runner, a better leader, and so dominant that other runners adjusted their race plan based on how she approached the, the race start to finish. Prior to the meet, Carly had been first or second in every race she ran. Carly's 19th-place finish at state is the highest by a Blaze athlete in 10 years. A week later, she traveled to South Dakota to race athletes from seven different states where she won her section and ran the 31st fastest time out of over 1,500 athletes. We're very proud of what she accomplished and look forward to what she will do next." On the boys' side, Liam finished 80th overall at state meet with a time of 16 minutes, 36 seconds, while Quinn ended up in 102nd with a time of 16 minutes, 51 seconds. Quinn and Liam finished right near each other at the state, at state last year, in 120th, 122nd place respectively, so this was a great improvement. Coach Jeff Weber, who is unable to be here tonight because he is enjoying, recent, retired from teaching, so kudos to Coach Weber. He's going to continue coaching, which we're excited about, but he's enjoying a little R&amp;R after retiring from teaching. Coach Weber said this about Liam and Quinn. "Don't let looks deceive you. Liam is a fierce, determined, and goal-oriented athlete. This is his second appearance at state meet, and he is only a sophomore. As good of a runner he is, he's also an amazing teammate and helps others when needed. Quinn was the soul of this team this past season. He led with conviction and always made sure all members of the team felt welcome. He gave so many rides for athletes this season. He's also a fierce competitor. At the section meet, he was in 14th place with one kilometer of the five-kilometer race left to go. He moved up five places and qualified for his second state meet with one second to spare." Congratulations to Liam and Quinn and all of our Blaze Cross Country student athletes.
One, two, three. One more, one, two, three. Perfect, thank you.
Okay, that's all right. You got it up. All right, last, we are going to recognize Kaylee Sorenson from Adapted Soccer. Since the Adapted Sports State Tournaments resumed in November 2021, the Burnsville-Farmington-Lakeville Blazing Cats have won six of the seven CI Division tournaments in soccer, floor hockey, and softball. They've won three in a row in soccer, clinching the third with an 8-1 victory over Dakota United in the championship game, which was held on November 18th at Stillwater High School. Coach Sean Teji said, "One key to the Blazing Cats' success is the group of players, many of whom have been in the program the last three years, who are happy with what they have accomplished but never satisfied." Kaylee Sorenson is the only Burnsville student on a team that competed in the state tournament. Coach Teji said, "Kaylee is a junior defender on our soccer team who is an integral part in winning the state championship. She's a hard-working and never gives up on a play. Kaylee is considered one of our team leaders, and we are happy to have her for another year. Kaylee is more than deserving of this recognition as one of our starters and top players. She's an outstanding three-sport athlete for the Blazing Cats." Congratulations to Kaylee and the Blazing Cats. Give her a round of applause. Members of the school board, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Director Kleiner. Are there any comments or questions from board members this evening? No, thank you. Well, I'd like to just, on behalf of the board and the entire district, thank all of you for your hard work, your accomplishments. I'd also like to thank the caregivers that are behind you, and I'm sure spent many hours running you to practices and such over the years, so thank you very much. And thank you all for coming tonight, and while I'm sure you're super excited to see the sausage making a school board work, you're certainly welcome to slip out the side door if you'd like to at this point. Okay. Next, we will receive a report from the Student Performance and Achievement Committee giving us a literacy update this evening. This report will be presented by Amina Othado, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Amy Petosky, Director of Student Support Services, Jamie Howe, MTSS Title I Coordinator, Christine McDonald, Elementary Curriculum Coordinator, and Katie Ness, Literacy Implementation. Welcome. And I read a bunch more names than three, so someone's missing, so...
No, they're sitting right there.
Oh, they're here, okay.
Thank you Board Chair Miller, Superintendent Battle, members of the board. Thank you so much for the opportunity for all of us to come and share information around the reading performance and instruction of our 191 students. This evening, I, Director Petroski, and members of the CISA team are happy to be here to talk about the work being done and the impact of how students learn to read and how teachers are supporting students at all levels of performance. First, district-wide supported, supported by grant funding from MDE, our focus has been working on aligning our systems in a multi-tiered system of support, not only for literacy but in other areas as well. This integrated system establishes structures and processes that offer instructional supports for our students based on their demonstrated needs. First, we will share the impacts in primary literacy instruction with our Tier 1, or instruction for all students that they receive. Then, we'll share about Tier 2, or our intervention for some students in groups who need additional support. And finally, you will be able to see the impact of Tier 3, or our individualized instruction for students who demonstrate that need. I would first ask that you take a step back and take a broad view of how elementary students in 191 have performed, measured by the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments. We continue to see progress in the percentage of students meeting grade-level benchmarks, not only from year to year but also in the cohorts. The student cohorts, which is, you can see on the right, are represented here, did receive their foundational literacy instruction during the 2020 through 2021 timeframe. We look forward to seeing how this year's Grade 2 students perform in 2025 on the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments after experiencing the foundational literacy instruction that we have implemented this year for all students. For these students, we continue to, for these students in grades 3, 4, and 5, we continue to provide ongoing interventions and support and use our local assessment data to tailor support needs to boost their reading skills. To share more of the story of foundational literacy instruction is Christine McDonald, our elementary coordinator.
Good evening, Board Chair Directors and Superintendent Battle. At the beginning of this school year, all kindergarten through second-grade classrooms implemented Hagerty Bridge to Reading curriculum. Hagerty Bridge to Reading blends explicit phonemic awareness, which is the listening and speaking of our language, and phonics, which is the print element of our instruction, to create a comprehensive approach to early literacy. All kindergarten through second-grade students participate in daily instruction of Hagerty Bridge to Reading. Paired with that, each kindergarten grade-level teacher and team participates in at least a once-a-month literacy coaching session. These sessions are facilitated by myself, Katie Ness, and Jamie Howe. The focus of these coaching sessions are on the curriculum development and implementation into the classroom setting, administering common formative assessments, collecting student data, and analyzing that student performance to guide our educators in making daily instructional decisions. Data walls are also used daily, weekly, and monthly to collect Hagerty Bridge to Reading formative assessments, benchmark formative assessments, and universal screening data. All of these assessments and data that is collected is directly linked to the Minnesota Department of Education Literacy Standards, our grade-level guarantees, and our report cards. The data collected assists teachers in designing whole-group and small-group instruction at the Tier 1 level. Each kindergarten through second-grade teacher administers assessments before and after explicit phonemic awareness and phonics instruction. On this particular slide, the data on the left shows the number of students by grade who were already proficient with a specific skill prior to instruction and the number of students proficient with the same skill after just five weeks of instruction. The data on this slide shows students' pre- and post-assessment results on the phonemic awareness skills of onset sound. That's the ability to hear a word and isolate the initial sound and say that initial sound. As noted, the level of student proficiency increased in all grade levels after five weeks of instruction, and also, to be considered proficient, a student must be able to isolate the initial sounds correctly on all words provided on the assessment, so a 100% to be considered proficient. On the right side of the slide is an image of the Hagerty Bridge to Reading data wall that I referenced earlier, that all kindergarten through first, second-grade teachers use to track their academic progress. And again, that is just a sample to show how a teacher is tracking each student's progress towards reading proficiency. Similar to the previous slide, data is displayed showing the students' pre- and post-assessments for the phonemic awareness skill of blending phonemes. This particular assessment requires a student to hear three or four sounds in isolation and then blend those individual sounds into one word. The level of proficiency, just like our onset, from grades, for all grades after five weeks of instruction, have increased. And again, to be considered proficient, a student must be able to blend all sounds correctly on all of the words provided within the assessment. The slide before you illustrates a quote from Haley Warren, a kindergarten teacher at Vista View Elementary School, and in this quote, she is sharing her experience implementing Hagerty Bridge to Reading. Some key highlights from her quote are, is that she is seeing students take their learning and applying it into daily practice. She now sees equitable access to high-quality literacy curriculum to all students. Now, Katie Ness and Jamie Howe will be sharing information regarding our middle-school reading intervention.
Good evening, Board Chair Directors and Superintendent Dr. Battle. This year, both Eagle Ridge and Niklet Middle Schools have five full-time teachers dedicated to literacy intervention. Previously, if students needed reading intervention, they were put into a separate class and missed out on universal Tier 1 instruction. This model allows for students to receive both Tier 1 instruction and interventions that are flexible to their needs. Reading interventionists participated in Path to Reading Excellence in School Sites or Press Training through the University of Minnesota, with opportunities for classroom teachers to also receive the training to support ongoing collaboration. This training focused on a multi-tiered systems approach, focusing on assessment, data analysis, and intervention strategies. Interventionists are also receiving monthly coaching by myself to support this implementation and more in-depth meetings after screening benchmarks in both October and January.
A few things that we would like to highlight with this implementation is that interventionists are now able to meet with over 180 students, where in the past, or with previous interventions that were dictated by class schedule, only about 75 students could be served. This has contributed to some noted success. For example, 17 of the Eagle Ridge Middle School students who performed below grade level at the beginning of the year on the FastBridge reading fluency assessment have now reached grade-level benchmarks. This is one of the many examples of success that we're seeing. In addition, Eagle Ridge Middle School Associate Principal Jen Boor has noticed the benefits of this change. Her insights on this slide highlight examples of targeted instruction and increased student engagement. Thank you. And we'll pass it over to Director Petroski to talk about Tier 3.
Good evening, Chair Hume, or, excuse me, Chair Miller, members of the board and Dr. Battle. In order to build the capacity of our teachers to gather and understand data, we created a Curriculum and Data Coach position. Some of the ways the Data Coach supported our teachers include literacy outcome coaching with our elementary special education teachers, meeting the fidelity and the implementation of the reading interventions, collaborative design and alignment of reading interventions, and bi-monthly data meetings to review progress monitoring data. By working across multiple schools, the Data Coach was able to use her lens as a systems level and identified themes across our special education programs. Our intervention, SIPs, resulted in some students making good growth, but several students were not. They required a different intervention to meet their individual needs. To address this identified need, we formed a reading steering committee last winter. In collaboration with Jamie in the CISA department, the committee reviewed curriculums that followed the science of reading, and we unanimously approved UFLY, the University of Florida Intervention. Understanding the urgency, we implemented this new curriculum immediately. As we know, one intervention does not work for all students, and so we also selected Spire that was going to pilot this winter, or this fall. The graph shows the comparison of students who were benchmarked in the fall of 2022 and again in the spring of 2023. As you can see on the left, 75% of the students were highlighted, were at high risk in the high-risk category. 25% of the students were at some risk. With the combination of the direct coaching from the Data Coach and the UFLY curriculum started last winter, students made significant progress in the spring. On the right, 42% of the students were still at high risk. However, 29% of the students moved to some risk, 25% of the students moved to low risk, and 3% of those students met and exceeded their benchmarks. This is what we call closing the gap. Programs moving forward is, this graph shows the three interventions that we used this year. The graph shows a comparison of the impact of student outcomes in each of the different reading interventions from fall to winter benchmark. These intervention, these interventions are SIPs, UFLY, and Spire. As you can see, SIPs, as you can see on this, the UFLY Inspire are being, well, UFLY Inspire are creating much more of an outcome for our students, and UFLY Inspire are being adopted and chosen for the individual, individual students based on their individual needs. On the right, you can see that some of our, at our, we had a reading steering committee thing in December, and our teachers provided some quotes about how their students are doing with the Spire intervention, being more engaged and coming and enjoying their reading. They're becoming more confident readers as well.
As the CISA team members partner with teachers and principals to provide high-quality instruction for all students, the legislation known as the READ Act is impacting schools throughout the state. The work that teachers and CISA have done to really do position 191 on an accelerated path to meet the elements and the requirements of this new law. First, the district adopted FastBridge as a tool for universal screening, literacy screening in 2019. This is one of the two state-approved screening tools, and universal screening is embedded into our system, already ahead of the timeline for the state. One of the intervention curricula, UFLY, is on the list of the five state-approved curriculums released this month. Hagerty Bridge to Reading is currently on the reconsideration list for curriculum from the state as well for K-2. The reading steering committee will begin its work on vetting the remaining curriculum on the approved or reconsideration list for our students in grades 3 through 5. The teacher representative group meeting in December and January have also put forth a recommendation for one of the other elements of the READ Act, which is the state-approved professional development, development programs. Carryall...
Carryall has been recommended for all K-5 teachers, while through a state grant, currently all of our VPK and preschool teachers started this month on the state-approved literacy training, accelerated ahead of the rest of the state for our early childhood educators. The continued collaborative work has District 191 on a firm foundation for reading and literacy improvement. When I ask you to think back on that broad view from the first, from the first slide showing that some of our, we still have students who are caught in the gap and in collaboration with our tier-two and our tier-three and strong tier-one instruction for all students, we are really poised to bring about great improvements in structure in not only the way that we instruct reading, but in the performance and the opportunity for success for all of our students in 191. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from board members?
Thank you, Chair Miller. Always appreciate the spa reports. Thank you all. I have several questions, some of them are clarifying. Let's see, starting with the phonemes. Christine, I think you were talking about them. It just got me thinking about how we have many multilingual learners, and they have different phonemes. How do we help them do that with Hagerty?
In our coaching sessions, although I stated that we work with classroom teachers, many multilingual teachers are also coming to our coaching sessions and are having an active role in the articulation and learning development of our students. And oftentimes, when we are assessing our students in the data that I shared with you, oftentimes, we're having students either transfer that knowledge or that skill into their native language before we ask them to do it in the English language as well. But again, we're in close partnership with the multilingual department and our multilingual teachers to support our students in that transition of learning English as well. But many of those phonemic awareness skills of isolating sounds that we hear can be applied across all languages.
So, just repeating back to make sure I understand, so if I speak, if I'm fluent in Spanish, we might start with a student who's in elementary with the Spanish phonemes to help them understand and then move them into English?
Yeah, that is our ultimate goal in full transparency there, that is happening in other schools than compared to others due to the adults in the building that may be able to speak fluently in that language as well. But when we have those resources, and that's conversations that we have in those monthly coaching sessions, of what resources can we provide, adult resource can we provide for those students to make that, to see if they have that skill set? Because, just because a student may not be able to perform that skill in English, they certainly can maybe be able to perform it in their native language.
Exactly. That's great. Thank you. And then Katie and Jamie.
Director Alt, one second. Dr. Battle, one follow.
Thank you, Chair Miller, members of the board, and Director Alt. I will ask Dr. Chris Belmont to help me share what we saw from the Harriet Bishop Principal Ken S.A., as well as kindergarten teacher. They presented to me as part of their school improvement and fall data. It was a video of a English language learner, and I see Isis Buchanan too, if you can help us remember, using the Hagerty. She was actually teaching her fellow student her language. So the assets they bring, their language learners, and so you can share a little bit more about that. It's a long time since I've been an elementary reading teacher, exactly what we saw in that video.
Thank you, Superintendent Battle. You know, just, I believe that we are on the precipice of really becoming a plural lingual school culture, but I'm seeing evidence of that K-12. So students, staff really creating the space for students to free-flowingly interact with language and culture, both English and their native language. So yeah, that video is powerful. Hoping Principal S.A. shares that next month, when you have a native Spanish speaker teaching a native Somali speaker how to say maestro, using the Hagerty, the Hagerty tools that she had learned in that class. So that's what we're seeing more about. We have come a long way when we think about the cultural proficiency continuum. The left side, unhealthy practices, it wasn't that long ago, but it was fairly long ago, that I was receiving behavior referrals for students that were speaking their native languages. We have come so far using the tools of cultural proficiency, where we are creating accultured spaces, where people are bringing the best of what they bring and what gives them feeling confident and brilliant, and then they're merging that with our English language and our tools of literacy.
Isis Buchanan, Director of Educational Equity, did you have anything to add? It was a powerful moment to watch that video.
Well, and it was a powerful moment, and I would just say that I was a teacher of first grade, so it's a younger grade, and this was a kindergartner, I believe, that we saw. But the student, I don't know if you've ever heard of total physical response, but it's part of like psy-op strategies, where you're actually moving your body. And so basically, in the video, you can see the student using this strategy of total physical response to say the different sounds of the word, and you usually touch your shoulder, mid-elbow, and then hand, and then you're sounding out the word. And so the student, though, had done something different. They flipped, and they were teaching another student Spanish, how to say the word teacher. And so the student was saying maestra, maestra, teacher, you know, to another peer in their class. And so it was just a great way to see how that student had applied that reading context, you know, with learning about sounds and how they work in English, and applying it to the Spanish language to teach another student who speaks English Spanish. So it was, I mean, their brains are so amazing when you look at how they're able to, you know, make that merge and connect things. And then similar to what you were saying about phonics and phonemes, like, I think as a system, we're also trying to learn more about what all these different things mean. But like cognates is another thing that comes to mind, that parallel with that, and helping our staff know what are sounds that are in English that are similar to sounds in some of our other languages is also information that I've been working to share with our ML teacher team, so that they can share it with, you know, teachers at their sites, because sometimes that'll help you choose the words you're using in your lessons. So we're better trying to align, you know, like, helping that language development for students.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Katie and Jamie in the middle school, and this is just a clarifying question. Reading and core instruction, basically, the core instructors are now literally reading instructors.
So at the middle school.
Or within core, within the core instruction, middle schoolers are receiving literacy.
So the core instruction block in middle school is a reading language arts block. And so we have language arts teachers who are teaching that core instruction according to the Minnesota standards for language arts. Within that, because it is a block, students have the opportunity for those intervention teachers to push into that block for small group instruction, which is the tier-two, and provide those intervention strategies that they've identified.
Got it. And then, I was fascinated to hear about the implementation, Amy, of, it was, was it just UFLY?
Yes.
That you implemented kind of quickly?
Last year.
Just really quickly?
Yes.
Because for as long as I've been here, we've always talked about how, you know, there's a, what, three-year implementation period for new ventures? How did you do it so quickly? It was innovative, which is awesome.
Yep.
It's obviously having an impact on the students. I'll stop and let you answer the question, sorry.
Sounds good. Yes, Director Alt, on the committee that we had on our reading steering committee, we had several teachers that were going through the letters training through the University of Minnesota. And because of that, they were in groups and Facebook, whatever it is, when we started pulling the information and different kinds of curriculums together, this one was brought up as the one that really follows the science of reading and really takes a look at the, at how the, and the different, how you basically teach and the order that you teach the sounds and how it makes sense to be able to do that. The other thing that we really liked about UFLY is that sometimes students don't get it the first time. And so there was some reteaching things that wasn't basically reteaching a previous lesson, they embedded other lessons to make it look different, but yet there was repetition enough with that, which we felt our students in special education really would, you know, do great things with that kind of repetition. Our SIPs program did not have that type of repetition, and so a lot of, what our teachers were reporting to us during the reading steering committee is that that also moves a little fast for some of our students, and it would be better to have something that we could embed and use more repetition for them to be able to gain that skill and become a routine.
Awesome. Well, and I think, you know, as, go ahead, Dr. Battle, sorry.
Also, members of the board and Director Alt, we've had some leadership development sessions, and we were challenged by one presenter that in education, we sometimes wait, and if we can, we need to move forward if we know it's right and best for our students. And so I think that was a part of it too, and Amy remembers.
Yep.
We were like, so as long as it's legal, it's within your budget, go for it, and that's what they're doing. So I want to share that, that part of the leadership development, to empower your people to be innovative and not put up barriers.
And it was, it's a curriculum that is relatively inexpensive to have. It's $100 per book, per lesson, and then all the lessons were also online, free for our teachers to use. And so there was no additional cost with that. And I'll be honest, I celebrated really hot when the UFLY was one of the ones that was selected, and with the help of our CISA department, that was the one that was by far, we're going to implement this one and go with it. So we were really excited to see that that was one of the ones that was selected.
Well, and I know, as a board, we've talked about, I mean, one of our, you know, strategic, in the strategic roadmap is innovating, and of course, we don't want to be sloppy, and Dr. Battle, you know, doing what's right, of course, is what we all want, and there's always that juggling, right? We want to do what's right. Of course, cost is always a consideration. There are so many parts to the puzzle, but, you know, it's great, and it's great to hear that there are things that can be done swiftly and well for our students, because in education, things are so darn slow. And there's a lot that we can be doing for our students, so yay, hurrah, whatever can be done well for our students in shorter periods of time. You know, I know, you know, we've talked about it, and the board supports that. Thank you, that's all.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I did have one question, and it kind of was based on, you know, one of your questions you touched on as far as cost, and I guess I'm just, you know, wanting to make sure we can continue to fund these programs and make sure that we have it budgeted. I mean, are any of these at risk for us, you know, not being able to fund them in the future? Are we making plans to make sure that we can continue to keep them going?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
We'll keep paying for what works.
Okay.
Good. It's a good practice. Any other questions, comments? All right, well, thank you all for coming. Thank you for the work you're doing for our students. All right, next, we will receive a report about Burnsville Alternative High School, Burnsville High School, and Secondary 191 Virtual Academy. From Chris, Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent Principal Kelly Ron, Principal Jesus Sandoval, and some of their building leadership team members and students. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Miller, members of the board, Superintendent Battle. Happy to be here with another addition of our school reports, this time, the pinnacle of our 191 student experience, high school, alternative high school, and 191 virtual academy. So I'm honored to introduce Principal Jesus Sandoval, Principal Kelly Ron, to get us going.
Thank you. Board Chair, excuse me, Board Chair Miller, Superintendent Dr. Battle, and members of the board. My name is Jesus Sandoval, and I am the proud principal of Burnsville High School. I'd like to go ahead and start by sharing a little bit about profile of a learner. And one of the first documents, more than six months ago, that I saw, and the document itself is more than just words. I saw that as I was researching the district, and now that I've been a part of the Burnsville High School community for the last six months, I truly see the profile of the learner come out. And so they're not just words on the paper, on the document. We're innovative as a high school. Our goal is to make sure that students are future-ready, that they are academically sound and prepared, that they are civic-minded by the courses that we teach, the opportunities that are given to them at the high school. Cultural proficiency is certainly a part of what we do, and many things that you're going to hear this evening. We have opportunities for them to become financially ready. Ultimately, our goal is for them to transition, to ensure that they have a solid plan, solid resources, solid support after the high school. And so I am pleased to bring up a few students, and I'm going to go ahead and introduce the first one as we speak. I'm bringing up one of our ninth graders. If you want to join me, please. Nabil. Nabil Ali is a ninth-grade student, and he's going to share a little bit about his perspective in transition from middle school.
Hello, my name is Nabil Ali. I went to elementary school at Vista View. Last year, I went to middle school at Niklet, and I'm here right now as a freshman in Burnsville High School.
Nabil, thank you for that, and you want to share a little bit about your, how your transition was, how you feel you're doing in ninth grade?
One of the things I experienced as a freshman in Burnsville High School is that there's more work, and you have to put more time and effort into your assignments. Instead, unlike middle school, you have to work for your grades, and with help, my teachers are also able to stay on top of that. Another thing I experienced as a freshman is that there's more opportunities at Burnsville High School, from sports, different kinds of sports, to clubs. Right now, I'm part of in-house basketball, and I plan, it was called trying out for the Burnsville High School basketball team next year. And the last thing I experienced as a freshman is that, at first, I saw the high school as a very big school and very intimidating, but now I'm used to it. I can get to my classes, and it was called passing time, and I'm very used to it now. One of the teachers that really helped me out in my first semester of high school is Mr. Johnson. He was my science teacher, seventh hour, was the last day, the last hour of the class. He really helped me out, and he supported me. He was one of the teachers that really supported me my first semester in high school.
Nabil, thank you for sharing that. What Nabil privately shared with me is that he wanted to work on public speaking, and I think he did a wonderful job, Nabil, so thank you. I'm going to bring up one of the many things that we have going for us in comparison to other schools in the district. We have many pathways, and I'm excited to bring up two students that are part of the associative arts pathway. Please join me, Laika May Domingo and Miriam Ali. We have two 11th-grade students that are part of the program, and would like to share a few words about the associative arts pathway.
Okay, so hello, everyone. My name's Laika, and I'm currently a junior who's part of the Associates of Arts Degree Program in BHS. I'm also one of the students who's the first batch of students who's going to be part of it. So moving on to my first week in, as a junior in this program, it was overwhelming at first because of the amount of college courses, higher-level courses we have to take, and we are, it was, but there was a lot of things going on, so I personally felt very overwhelmed. But as the time goes on, I felt a little better because I was able to adapt to the courses, and Associates of Arts Degree Program is a program where we take as much college courses as we can to get credits, 60 credits. 60 credits at the end of the high school. And those credits would save us a lot of time or end money going to college. So I grabbed this opportunity to be part of this program. So I can prepare better for college and I feel so much better now that I took this opportunity.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mariam. Um, so transition from the first semester to the second semester, as Laika said before, that it was very, oh. Okay. It's very difficult and overwhelming at first because our counselor, Ms. Agerson, she told us that the amount of homework and assignments that we have to do would be like 40 hours a week or something like that, I think. And it's a lot. So I felt very overwhelmed at first. But as I got used to it, now second semester, I feel like throughout the first semester, I developed many strategies and time management, which is like so important that I felt that the second semester might be more easier. But like, there's like certain classes that we could take such as public speaking, AP US History. Um, another one is environmental science and so many other more college classes that you can take. So like many students tried to opt out of this program, but a lot of us stayed because we never know when we can get like such opportunities again to get such things like an associate degree and graduating high school with it. So it's like a great opportunity. And coming from an immigrant family, I'm the first generation to do this. And I feel like to go to college or again, anything like that, I feel like it's an important opportunity for me to like, and it's such an important thing for me to do. I feel like this is why it's such a great opportunity for me to do this.
Thank you both, Laika and Mariam. Appreciate that. I think it's important to know that we here in District 191 are truly trailblazers. This is a program that not many districts and schools have across the state. And we were very fortunate to have that here at District 191. And so I'm going to ask Ivanka Singh, 12th grader, to talk a little bit about her experience as being a senior. As she has been a part of our industry for some time. Ivanka?
Hi. Uh, hi. My name is Ivanka. I'm a 12th grader, Burnsville High School. Thank you for inviting me here. Really thankful. Well, in Burnsville High School, I've been there for four years, four long years. But I honestly appreciate it. I have my ups and downs here and there, of course. But I was able to gain so much support from my peers, but not only that, from my staff, from the staff as well. They helped me, they understood my circumstances and they helped me through the, the hard road, the bumpy road of just high school. Especially during the COVID time when we had to transition from online to in-person. I especially had a hard time with that, but I was able to get through it without a problem. Um, but also Burnsville High School gave me so many opportunities. It helped me find myself in the career path that I wanted to go, go through. Especially with the pathways that they gave, the opportunities they, that they, um, provided with, provided for me. It's the way, it just helped me find the, my path, the career path that I wanted to go through. It found, helped me grow as a person and I'm like super thankful for that. I appreciate Burnsville High School and it, as time went on, I thought I would be nervous to, you know, take the next steps, to go into college, to finally have my own workspace. But honestly, Burnsville High School helped me become more strong and more confident in myself. And I know I'd be able to get through it because of Burnsville High School and the staff and my peers. So I'm very thankful for Burnsville High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Ivanka. Before I bring up our, our last guest from Burnsville High School, I want us to just resonate a little bit about what our students are speaking about. Those are their words. Those, those aren't anything from me. Those are their words. And so as I look at the profile of learner, those aren't just words that we're doing here in District 191. We are preparing students for the now and for the tomorrow. And I'm excited to be a part of that. And so I'm going to bring up Ms. Danielle Christie. Um, she is our District 191 Avid Coordinator, Teacher, and the BLT member, which is our Building Leadership Team Member. So please welcome Danielle Christie.
Thank you for having me tonight. Um, as, um, as was stated, I'm the, I'm the District Avid Coordinator and the Building Avid Coordinator for Burnsville High School, but I'm also an avid teacher. Um, and I'm on the BLT. And I'd like to just talk about four things, um, that as a, as a teacher, um, that are important to, to us as, um, staff people and as a member of the BLT. Um, so I'm going to talk it through the lens of the Avid elective. The Avid elective, um, is a thriving program right now. Um, it, it, it grows every year. We have over 300 kids in the nine through 12 Avid elective program. Um, and our focus is college and career readiness support for our students. Uh, we, um, structure time for organization. We, um, coach our kids, our students in areas of confusion throughout their classes. Um, we have lessons and activities based in, um, WICR, WICR skills to strengthen WICR skills that would apply to all students' classes. We have intentional support in mentoring and opportunity knowledge. And we offer space for student agency. Avid school-wide is something that's really important at Burnsville High School. Um, we, um, we have selected, um, to have a focus this year called the, the, the BHS B3. And that BHS B3 is to ensure that we know that Avid is great for all, or Avid is great in the elective class and it's successful and it, it pays off. So what can we do for all students? So we have a focus on, um, focus notes is one strategy we use. Three big questions is another inquiry strategy we use. And we also use Think, Inc., Pair, Share, um, which is a collaboration strategy with, that involves writing as well. And one of the, um, focuses or one of the themes that are, one of the, um, intentions that we had at the beginning of the year was that we wanted to walk slow so that we can run. So that, you know, we want to walk so that we can run. So start small so that we can make sure that we're doing, doing things well and that we're able to build from them. Um, so, um, these three important strategies have had a pretty big impact so far on, um, our students. I think all students can say that they, they know, right, Cody? All students can say that they know what the B3 is. Um, but this also provides purpose for our staff and our students. Um, so we are capturing best practices. We're framing those with effective systems. And, um, we're creating, um, an environment and a culture for being future-ready. Another thing I want to talk about, um, with our staff is our professional development plan that we've had this year. Um, and that's really about staff agency. Um, our site PD, like I just talked about, was, is, is that focus on the B3. But we're making sure that we have that connection and that marriage with grading for equity, being equitable with our assessments, and also our PBIS work. Um, we, examples that we've done this year, we've had a differentiated, differentiated gallery walk, um, for our, with full staff, where every teacher brought examples of their B3 that they've done in class. We were able to learn from one another and see, hey, how are you using this in science versus how do you use this? How do you use focus notes in math, which is, you know, um, something that our math department thrives in. Um, conversations about what the students have learned, how, what are the equitable assessments? And what relational capacity is going on in our classroom as we're doing these strategies? Another thing that, um, has been us, that has been a central part of our PD this year is the District-wide Avid, or District-wide Secondary Avid Academy. What this is, is it's 19 different two-hour workshops throughout the year that we hold after school. Our teachers participated in, but our teachers facilitated as well. So we are learning from one another. Um, and the topics might range from fostering growth mindset to WICR to increase rigor, um, to developing disciplinary literacy through mentor texts. So we have 19 different, throughout the year, um, October through May, 19 different workshops that's, that teachers can attend. Um, the last thing I want to talk about is student agency, which is so important. Um, so I want to end with a couple of examples of a student agency, specifically in the Avid program, because that's what I know best. Um, our Avid 12 students, Cody is going through this right now. Our Avid 12 students plan, or develop, plan, and execute a senior service project capstone their second semester. So our Avid 12 is very focused on obviously getting into college. So, um, they have already applied and, um, filled out the FAFSA and are looking for scholarships. So it's almost like now their, their, their biggest college, um, decision right now is deciding which college to go to. On average, our Avid seniors have been accepted to more than five, more than five schools each. Um, Cody's is more than five. Um, so not to embarrass you, Cody. Um, and, um, last year for this, for this service project, last year, our students, um, this will be executed in the next month or two with our seniors this year. But last year, our students did a ninth grade, a rising ninth grade retreat for our eighth graders. And they, they, again, they planned everything. They communicated with the principals. They, they, um, ordered the buses for these, for this ninth grade retreat. Um, the year before that was our Culture Week, which was a huge success. Um, e-mentorships are something student, that, that is totally, um, a student agency piece in the Avid elective. We have an eight-week e-mentorship program, all of our students do, um, in the, in the Avid elective that's college and career focused with writing prompts. And each student is connected with a business person from Blue Cross Blue Shield, United Health Group. Um, where are the other ones? Huntington Bank, um, um, uh, SPS, which was a company I had just learned about once we got connected with them, SPS Commerce. And we, they have eight weeks of emailing with this one particular professional where they get to ask questions about their educational journey and their pathway to their career. Um, and they get to meet them face to face. It's like one of those programs that we're so lucky to be a part of. Uh, another student agency piece would be our Student Spotlight Competition. We have three, three students this year who, um, were selected night, um, from all over Minnesota, um, from ninth through 12th graders. Um, they were selected as winners of that, of that competition. And there's a celebration for them next week. Um, the students you heard from today are Avid students that are in the AA program. And, um, like I said, all of our seniors, 100% of our seniors who graduate from the Avid elective, um, are going to college. So that's something we're super proud of. Um, in closing, I just want to say that, um, we have a focus at BHS, um, not just on the elective, but school-wide. And we do all, um, recognize that it provide, Avid provides purpose for all of our stakeholders, both students and staff. We know that students need rigorous academic preparedness. We know that students need opportunity knowledge and we knew, we know that students need student agency. Um, but we also know as educators that we must insist on rigor. We must break down barriers. We must align the work and we must advocate for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Christie. As we continue on, I want to share with you just some examples of, uh, the, our site improvement plan and how that has, um, and I'll honestly, if I had two hours, I still wouldn't have time to share the, the many things that are, are happening within our Burnsville High School community. But I can share a few things from each. Uh, from a caring community standpoint, uh, PBYS is an area that, um, as a school, uh, we are in our, our first year. Uh, PBYS was present at some point. Um, we are a part of the cohort and it's a two-year cohort. We're looking forward to seeing what, um, transpires as a result of us, um, diving into, uh, this particular cohort as we're really repurposing who we are, um, in regards to our three pillars. Our respect, responsibility, and our engagement. Um, and so that's our three pillars and we have those, if you ever walked into the high school recently, many signage throughout the school community. A Blaze Praise is an example where we provide shout-outs to our students. Uh, where, um, the many good things that are happening, um, whether it's attendance or academics, um, or showcasing are one of our three pillars. Uh, Burnsville Strong, Link Crew, some staff recognition. In regards to Link Crew, they, they're pivotal to help with the transition from middle school to high school. Both on that first day of new freshmen and our Link Crew has, uh, spent some time in our middle schools um, as there's a need for registration. Ms. Christie has already touched base on student agency, um, in terms of other things, uh, that we have going for us. Affinity groups, um, strong affinity groups, um, not only putting on events, but building them as leaders. And so being intentional about the time that we spend, uh, within that space. You heard earlier, some wonderful athletics and activities that are happening, the recognition from a state level. Our internship opportunities. So in this year in particular, we've had 12 students participate in an internship. Uh, that results from anywhere from Best Buy, 3M, um, to companies such as Toral and Medtronic. And so it's amazing how we can provide that opportunity, uh, through Genety Works, um, with that internship. Uh, and that's wonderful to hear. Work-based learning opportunities. Some of the staff agencies that Ms. Christie mentioned, uh, with our Avid Academy. Our teachers teaching the district, uh, different, uh, important concepts. A really strong new teacher mentor, mentorship program where our BLT members, uh, which we have a, a large BLT, uh, membership of 23 individuals. Um, and so we meet a few times each month. But one of the pieces is for them to, uh, really help support, uh, with the new mentor, uh, teacher mentorship. And so each of them have, um, brought in, uh, individuals under their umbrella and help support them along the way. Um, our teachers are innovating new courses. And some of us, we've seen some of the new courses, they spend the time building the new curriculum for those courses. Um, our CTs are collaborative teams, department meetings that we are meeting on a monthly basis. And obviously our building leadership team. It was mentioned already around cultural proficiency. So we've provided some professional development for our staff around grading for equity. Uh, we've adopted some principles that we're supporting. Um, and, um, through that work, we're being more equitable in, in those practices. Some of the accessibility to our rigorous courses and our pathways, bilingual communication. Um, some of the components that we are implementing around our non-exclusionary discipline practices, uh, as that is very important. When we look at some inclusive partnerships, um, one of the things that we've incorporated is our weekly newsletter for staff called the Blaze Connect. Uh, and that's something that we as an administrative team and others populate to make sure that our large school community is providing an opportunity to, to have one stop where there's communication. We've extended that out to, um, our families and have created what's called Blazing Times. And some of you have access to that. Our Blazing Times have anywhere between, um, 1,900 to 2,300 hits per week. That's a family newsletter that we are providing out, uh, for our families to make sure that we are bridging the gap uh, from school to home. We've started a PAC, Parent Advisory Council. And so on a consistent basis, we have one coming up on Monday. Um, every other week we, we meet virtually one time, in person on another. And so that's an opportunity for us as administrative team to hear directly from our parents. And we have 12 to 15 consistent parents that are truly advising us. One of the topics that they gave great feedback on was our conferences. And so wanting to make sure that, that we are keeping that, uh, bridge alive. Um, our parent informational nights, we have one coming up to help support our incoming ninth grade families on February 5th. Um, registration is, is here and we certainly want to make sure that we communicate it out appropriately. Future readiness in regards to the many things that we offer from College Career Center. Um, with Marsha, Ms. Sexton, uh, working through that with students, are many pathways. You only heard of one particular pathway, our associative arts, uh, program and pathway. But certainly we have an amazing amount of pathways at Burnsville High School. CIS or College in the Schools, opportunities for students to gain college credit. Advanced placement courses and post-secondary enrollment options, PSEO. I want to close by just sharing a little bit about, um, my vision, uh, with what, um, this time next year will look like. We are implementing and, and supporting our ninth grade academy. This has been a, a topic in a conversation for some time. But we're putting some, uh, works to really support our incoming freshmen. So that way, that pivotal year from middle school to high school can truly not feel so overwhelming. to high school can truly not feel so overwhelming. Going from block scheduling, going from block scheduling to seven-period classes, that in itself is rather difficult. And so how can we leverage an academy to help support our ninth graders? So implementing that for next year. Continuing to prioritize safe and equitable learning environment. If you've been to the school recently, it's a little bit different than a year ago of how to access and enter our school. We've provided some roadblocks. You've got to buzz in to be able to enter our office. And so there's a practice that we put in our main office, and certainly we want to make sure that all of our 40 doors are taken care of and supported, and not necessarily in that same fashion, but there's different things that we could implement to ensure safety and security. Promote student involvement in extracurricular activities. We want to continue to provide emphasis on that. Strengthen family engagement. I think we certainly have made some progress, but we know that we need to make more progress with that. Strengthen our PBYS, our Positive Behavior and Intervention Practices, and certainly develop business and community partnerships. And so with that, I appreciate your time, and go ahead and bring up Ms. Rob.
Thank you so much for having us tonight. We love a chance to share what we're doing at BOSS, and then a little later, what we're doing in 191 Virtual Academy. Today, I have two BLT members, Angela Morris and Steph Millier, who will be sharing just one highlight of our school improvement work. Some of them will be mentioned, but they're going to just kind of talk about something that I don't think we've talked about in these presentations before. But we're going to start with a little video to get some student voice in the room of their experience at BOSS.
I came to BOSS because I was kind of like behind with my schoolwork and my grades.
So I can add my classes to measure everything.
Yeah, kind of my things.
I came to BOSS to get back on track with my education. I was in Dwyer at Redmond High School.
I came to BOSS because I heard it was academically better, and I heard it was smaller because I was distracted by a lot of people.
I came to BOSS so I can make up my credits faster.
What makes me successful at BOSS is I get the help I need from everyone around me, and I get my work done, and there's a lot of people here helping my work.
Getting my homework done, and doing the life thing I'm supposed to do.
The teachers.
And all the staff. They always push me to keep working no matter how I'm feeling, and I hope that all helps a lot.
Honestly, I just feel that everyone cares about their students in their own separate ways. Some people are hard on me, but some people need that busy situation.
The teachers, really. They help me with like the majority of my work. Help me sit down and actually understand it and take time with it. They don't rush me. They actually care that I'm trying to do the work.
I like the teachers. I like the environment, and I like the students.
There's not like, there's not a lot of kids over here, so I've got a lot of time to do my homework.
There's less distractions. It's more impressive.
I like how it's like, it's not too big, it's compact. It's not a lot of students, so you know almost everybody.
The teachers, they help me more because it's less like students in like the facility. So it's like, you know, you can get more help, and like the classes are real long. So sometimes I don't even go home with homework. You just be here with the classes, you're not here, and you're going to the man.
I like everything here, probably the staff, teachers, everything. It's just a perfect school.
My future plan is to go to college, go three years, then transfer to a university or another two, and maybe study in our students.
With a high school and a college.
I'm not asking, so I'll be drawn to a place where it's college, no matter what division it is, or just go as long as I have future in that.
I would be here.
My future plan is to move to is going to college and become a little sage.
And of course, these are just pictures from last year of some of the graduates, and a lot of you were there, so you were able to see them graduate. So our school improvement plan, as I mentioned, we have lots of different things on it, but when we begin planning it, we do take the profile of a learner and the core values of the district and look at all the things we're doing and kind of put them in categories and decide where are some areas where we maybe don't have as many initiatives going this year or things we can improve on. So for this year, that was our baseline for starting this school improvement planning process. So under caring community, I kind of went through the core values to categorize the school improvement efforts that are in our school improvement plan this year. For student support, the reason that I put that on there, obviously, we have student support, but this year, we have, the liaisons are much more visible and have set office hours at BOSS. So all of the cultural liaisons that we share with BHS have a regular schedule, so students know when to find them, they know when to find students, and that's something new this year. We have a new interventionist position that's providing intervention throughout the day for students in all kinds of core academic areas, as well as encouragement, motivation. We have a dean of students this year. We didn't have a dean prior to this year, so we have a dean of students, Larry Norton, who's a Burnsville graduate, who has come back to work in the district. We've had Strive Advisory. We've had that for the entire time. Angela Morris is going to talk about our CLPs, Continuous Learning Plans, something that we do in that advisory. And then we do EL and Special Ed teaming in classes. And then, of course, we have PBIS, and our program is very well-established, has been functioning very well for many years. Under cultural proficiency, the main thing we're going to talk about under that category, we will talk about school-wide Avid as part of the VA presentation because we share a Avid coordinator between the two programs and talk about how it's different than having an Avid elective class. But restorative practices is something that we implemented this year as a learning year for our staff, and we did professional development. Steph Millier is going to just talk a little bit about what that is. She has been doing this work for many years, but we've, as a BLT, moved it forward in conjunction with the Centers of, the Regional Centers of Excellence through MDE, doing some of the training. So Steph is just going to give you a little overview of what that looks like.
Good evening. It's nice to be here. So to give you kind of an idea of what happens in my classroom, we just started a new quarter, and the way that I like to use circles in my classroom is for community building. Every student gets a voice. So basically, we sit in a circle and we pass a talking piece around the classroom. Students aren't graded on participation, they're encouraged to participate, they can pass if they want to, so they're not required to speak if they don't want to. So it's a nice way to build community. You can discuss curriculum, so things that you've read in class. Each student, again, gets a voice. Talking circles for recurring issues within a classroom or within a school, setting values within a classroom and what's important to the learning that occurs there. There could be celebrations, there could be healing circles, and there can be decision-making circles. And then you can go a little step farther with that, discussing harm and healing conflict through circle. And you could even go beyond that, having healing circles for maybe one person that's going through crisis or loss in their life. We could use circles to build support and accountability for students that have goals that are difficult for them to achieve alone. And the far end of it would be reentry if there was a suspension or an expulsion or reentry into public schools. So it's a really exciting opportunity, and I enjoy the work very much. Thank you.
Under future readiness, we have a future fair every spring where, I know I talked about it two years ago at this presentation, for those of you that were here. We've really increased the amount of people that we invite in for that with all branches of the military, cosmetology. I know we need to add a real estate agent this year, because, not just because that student said that, we had talked about that, but, and then all kinds of different colleges, tech colleges, community colleges, four-year colleges. So we do that in the spring. We do the Zello lessons. We have a work experience coordinator, a full-time coordinator at BOSS, and I don't know if I've talked about that before, where we have a careers class, students take it as an elective class, as well as a work experience class. Once students complete this work experience class, which really talks about the skills you need in the workforce, then they can also get an additional credit each quarter for their actual job that they have. And that work experience coordinator goes and visits with their current boss and talks through like their employment traits, and so that's something that we have that students can get an extra credit every quarter for that as well. We have students still taking pathways at BHS. We've increased that program each year. With students now, some of them are in their second year of going over to BHS for different pathway classes, chef class. We have people in orchestra this year, choir, all different classes that we've got the bus going back and forth two or three times a day now. We're in the process of planning a family engagement night for our first time. We've always had parents come in for different things, but we're trying to have it an all-in-one activity night with a FAFSA for parents to learn how to get help on the FAFSA, talking about graduation planning. So we're still working on planning that. It'll be in March, and that will be something new for our school. We always do team conferences. We have a high attendance rate for our parent-teacher conferences. We did a parent survey this year already, and we'll do it again in the spring, newsletters, of course. And then now CLPs are something that Angela Morris is going to talk about, and that's kind of the foundation of the experience that the students have at our school. And we use it for school improvement planning and for data collection.
Good evening. So all students at BOSS are required to develop a continual learning plan. Students and their Strive teacher or advisor complete the CLP together. That way, students are empowered by seeing it visually and taking ownership of their graduation plan. The CLP focuses on credits earned, credits that are needed, and their graduation timeline. Students also get, set goals related to academics, personal needs, and post-secondary options. And then the CLP is reviewed quarterly, reviewed and updated quarterly with the Strive teacher and the student.
Thank you. We do a student survey fall and spring too, and we have a lot of data on that that we shared with Superintendent Battle at our principal reports, and we do it in fall and spring to compare the two. And then we're looking to add student leadership opportunities into the school as well. This is just one data slide. Dr. Belmont thought that I should include this slide on there. This just shows our credit attainment rate for students enrolled throughout the quarter for the last six-plus years, and you can see that we're trending upward each year. And I believe that a lot of that is that tier-one work that we're doing with Avid, with looping students and having advisory every day. The students have the same advisor throughout their whole time at BOSS. We do unit recovery, so I think that if I look back at our SIPs for all those years, that's what's making that number slowly grow. This time next year at BOSS, like I said, we're doing the learning stage of restorative practices and circles. So we've had six sessions already of that, and we'll be implementing that next year. Create pathway support at BOSS, just trying to make sure that once our students get to BHS, that we have liaisons there to make sure that the classes there are going as well as the classes at BOSS, so we're going to try to create more of a structured approach to that. I mentioned this, develop more student leadership and strengthen family engagement opportunities. We're going to do one this year. Next year, the plan is to do two, one in fall and one in spring. And then strengthen credit acquisition with an interventionist because it's a new position. We're learning as we go how to best utilize that person, and so far, it's going really well, but that's a new position, so I feel like we're strengthening that each year as that position continues to grow. Thank you. So now I'll put my Virtual Academy hat on. And Amy, you can come up. So we did a student survey for Virtual Academy, which I'm speaking on sixth through 12th grade because I'm in charge of the secondary component of that. And it's kind of two different schools. The sixth through eighth grade middle school has synchronous sessions, and electives are asynchronous. And then high school, Virtual Academy, is all asynchronous. But we surveyed the students, and this is a word chart of the bigger words were put more often on the survey. So as you heard about Kenna, the curler, earlier, she had mentioned flexibility. And so students like good energy, faster, privacy, ease of access. So you can just kind of see, those were kind of the responses that the students gave for that. Our story, through stories, the success, last year, I sat at this table and I said, I really hope to create a community in 191 where we have dedicated teachers, dedicated staff, and I feel like we have definitely done that this year. We have a student support team with a social worker and a dedicated counselor. We have a team that meets for student support team every week. Last year, if you are familiar, we had people doing two tents here, three tents there. Now we have dedicated, full-time high school teachers, full-time middle school teachers that meet as collaborative teams under the CTs. We're starting a positive behavior intervention system for VA. We've done a little bit at the middle school level. We're still working to implement that at the high school level. We've done professional development as a VA staff, which we weren't able to do when we had people at multiple buildings. And then we've really worked on different ways to communicate as a group who, a lot of the teachers are working from their own workspace, some in buildings, some at home. So I feel like we have really created a team this year, and I would guess that the VA teachers feel that team, and we've really come a long way in one semester. Our SIP in action, why students choose VA, I just put some of those on there. I know you have, you can see these, I'm not going to read through them all, but a lot of our students are no longer just staying in VA because they were in it, they're choosing it for other reasons. Some, less drama came up quite a bit, less distractions, able to focus on the work, focus on my sport, again, students who are moving between two different households during the week, it was easier to be online for them, mental health. So Amy is, Amy Hill, sorry, I didn't introduce you. Amy Hill is on our newly-formed VA BLT. So we didn't have a building leadership team for VA last year, so now I have two BLT members, Amy and then Pat Mozy, who couldn't be here tonight. So Amy is just going to focus on Avid, school-wide. I know Danielle did talk about some of the things, but what we're doing, she is part VA and part BOSS just for the Avid. Otherwise, she's a full-time high school asynchronous VA social studies teacher.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm very lucky and proud to lead two great programs. How our Avid program differs, because we are two non-traditional settings, it just is easier for us to look at all of our students as Avid kids and that they really need all of these skills. And so we went to a school-wide approach a couple years ago and implemented parts of the Avid elective in every core class, and then in some of our elective classes as well. Teachers are really the backbone of our Avid program in both the VA and at BOSS. Their willingness to always try new strategies, to never give up on students, to always believe that students in our programs, even though they're not at a traditional high school setting, deserve a great education and the same tools to be able to succeed in their post-secondary journey. So in our Avid strategies this year, we have also used the terminology of the B3, which Danielle Christie described. Ours, I think we have one different strategy, just based on the experience of our teachers and what they were already trying to implement in some of their goals. So we focus on focus notes, cost is questions of inquiry, trying to get students to share their voice and practice critical thinking in each of their classes, and also practice working together to help problem solve or helping each other. working together to help problem solve or helping each other. And I think you heard from a lot of the students in that video at Boz that it really is the teachers that really kind of help them strive to do their best. So school-wide, some of my goals as the coordinator this year was to figure out how to continue professional development with teachers that have already had quite a bit of Avid training. So we've started talking about different ways to level up inquiry. We've started the conversation of how to shift using artificial intelligence, AI, in the classroom, you know, not just as a viewpoint through plagiarism, but a viewpoint through they're going to have to use this in the real world, and how can we teach them to use it responsibly and to increase their learning. Staff in both the Virtual Academy and Boz receive a weekly B3 email from me. They love it. I like to think so. But it's a strategy that hopefully that they can implement right away to help support the B3 in their class. This semester, we're working on collecting evidence. If you go to Boz outside every classroom, you will see a QR code where teachers have a slideshow linked with student examples of what they've done for Avid in their classroom. We're looking to do something similar for the Virtual Academy. And then Boz was asked this year, I don't know, can I share that?
Sure.
Okay. Boz was asked this spring to be a part of a pilot program in the state of Minnesota with other schools in our region and across the state that are smaller settings, that are looking at not having a specific Avid elective, but implementing it school-wide. So we'll be participating in that. That's it.
Thank you. This time next year for secondary VA, I would like to somehow implement advisory in middle school VA, remembering that it's asynchronous, but finding out a way, finding a way to implement, I don't know if it'll be weekly, I'm waiting as we move into staffing to see how that's going to look, but having some sort of advisor for each individual student in VA, much like we have at Boz, to have that overview of making sure students have that one person. Full Zello implementation at secondary VA. We are doing Zello implementation at Boz, but now to move it into making sure each VA student is getting that experience, starting at the middle level through the high school. Middle school social opportunities is something that we would like to add for VA next year. Students in VA, whether it be middle school or high school, can access all of the activities we have at the Eagle Ridge and Nicollet or BHS, and they do. We have students involved in all kinds of things. These opportunities are more like during the day, like a lunch bunch. Students want to socialize. This is middle school. They want to get together in Google Meet sessions and just be able to talk. So trying to find a way to do that or have enrichment time where student teachers might be able to lead a club. So that's something that we're looking to implement in our school improvement plan for middle school VA next year. And then for high school VA, to get more BHS students into our supplemental VA classes. This year, we've had 25, we had 33 and then 25 this semester that are accessing one class through Virtual Academy. It's a lot of FIAD and health. It's for students that can't fit it in their schedule, so they're taking it through VA. But to try to broaden that and fill up all of our classes to free students to maybe do more pathways if they're at Burnsville High School and take some of our classes online. So we're looking to create a system now that we have dedicated support staff at VA, we can create a system to do that next year. And I just put on the bottom, student suggestions that they had had some of the similar ideas on the student survey that we did.
So thank you. That was, I think, just under 2,300 students in one school report that we kind of serviced there. Just a quick aside or acknowledgement of these two principals, these leaders you see before you, you feel caring community in their buildings. They have demonstrably different styles, yet they are both systems thinkers. And they also, I hope you noticed, they really see their staff for the strengths they bring and try to empower and unleash those strengths. So I'm really excited about our high school programming. Back to you, Chair, for questions.
Thank you. Fellow board members, are there any comments or questions?
All right, excuse me. I just want to say thank you both for coming out tonight, and this was one of the presentations I was really looking forward to tonight as well. So I really enjoyed getting to get a little bit more insight into, you know, what both Boz and BHS is really looking forward to. And as a BHS student myself too, I can really say that there's been times when I've attended different conferences or different work sessions with other students in different areas, whether it's in the South Metro or elsewhere in Minnesota, and nothing really compares to BHS in the way that we're able to, I like to say, have things kind of in-house and kind of made by the students. Talking a little bit about the affinity groups as well, I've heard stuff from our advisors about how so much of the work that we as students are putting into the affinity groups are things that we as students are actually putting in in comparison to a lot of different schools where there's so much people just coming in, like consultants coming in to essentially help students really view that broad idea. But it's all really happening at the high school by these real students, which is super impressive and super astonishing. So I guess that gives me a little bit of a quick nudge for Boz to possibly have some affinity groups.
And I do have one question in regards to grading for equity. We've kind of talked about that a lot this evening. I'm kind of curious to know, what does that look like for students at both institutions? Or the all three institutions per se?
Yeah, I can go ahead and start. So in terms of grading for equity, the district has asked us to look at seven principles. And so each site is asked to look at the seven principles and identify per school how we are rolling that out. And so as a BLT, and being in the summer, we looked at the seven principles, and I can give you some examples so that we have some context to it. We looked at the seven principles and identified that we wanted to move forward for semester one in four of the principles, and so four of the seven. And so the, for semester two, we were adapting two additional principles, guiding principles. So an example would be, we will grade academic performance, not behavior. That's an example of a principle. And so the idea behind, if you're just showing up for class, you're going to get a point, you know, you're going to get credits or points, you know, that practice is not a principle that we would, are supporting and recommending, right? So it's identifying the academic standards and really providing the guidance that would support the academic learning versus I bring a tissue box to school and I get points, right? So not behavior, but academics, and that's one example. So for the high school, there's one principle that we haven't adopted because we've identified that there's a need for the work within our CT, our collaborative team, ongoing for us to be comfortable and familiar with adopting that last principle. And it focuses on the alignment of grading practices within the same course or collaborative team. And so that has taken a lot more time, and so that's the one that, of the seven principles that we feel we need more time to do. But that's an example of what we're doing here at Burnsville High School.
And I can just speak to, it's, we're going on three years of a journey through this grading for equity. So that included a book study, teacher-driven design team that have put forth the guiding principles. So we're just now getting to implementation. I feel really encouraged because it's difficult to implement system-wide grading reform at a high school. It's been proven as challenging. What I'm hearing overwhelmingly from teachers is that they have moved through the theoretical framework. They have a collective vision, and now they're doing that challenging collaborative teamwork that Principal Sandoval mentioned of how to do it and how to kind of implement it. So that's what I'm hearing. And Cody, thank you for your questions. I was thinking, as I heard the presenters, that Chair Miller is going to have to have a work session just to figure out which college you're going to choose this year. I'm going to have to do that later. Yeah, that was exciting to hear. So I'm glad Ms. Christie acknowledged you.
And I also do want to like give a tiny bit shout out to the Avid program too. It's a student who's been in it since my sixth grade year in the district. It's tremendous to see how much community and so much support that we as students are able to get from the Avid program. And hearing it being implemented on a school-wide basis is really impressive too, because I've always wondered, as an Avid student myself, who's also a PSEO student, so I'm traveling in and out of high school quite often, just to attend Avid in the morning really. So, you know, I wish you folks at the VA and at Boz, best of luck in implementing that and all that fun. Good luck ahead. Thank you.
Doing it, yeah.
So dovetailing on Cody's question, so basically, at the end of the three years, no longer will a student be able to say, oh, drat, I got that teacher because, in a particular department, because this one's easier and that one is a little more challenging, basically. Yeah, okay. Well, that's great. And yes, so one request for the Avid graduation, can it not be on a Thursday night? We like to, we like to attend that.
We just emailed Sarah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Three options.
Awesome. Okay, great. That's always, that's always a favorite to attend. If not, I'm just being selfish. Sorry. Ninth Grade Academy, Principal Sandoval, can you elaborate a little bit more on what that might look like?
Absolutely. One of the things that, when I say implement Ninth Grade Academy for next year, I really should back up and say, what we're doing now is a part of the Ninth Grade Academy. And let me give you some examples. And so transitioning, we found, is so critical for our incoming ninth graders. And so we've been intentional to provide not just one, but two opportunities for our middle school students to come to the high school. In the past, we've waited until the spring, and certainly, we've identified that sometimes families have made decisions already, sometimes students have made decisions. And so we've already brought our eighth graders, both at Nicollet and Eagle Ridge, on campus in the fall and provided an opportunities for them to see firsthand our pathways. And so there was a tour that was involved, a presentation that was involved, and that was very intentional. So that is an example of part of our Ninth Grade Academy, our transition. We'll bring them back after they've registered for classes and really focus in on the next step of being involved, that student agency, being involved more than just within the classroom with the many wonderful things that you've heard this evening around activities and athletics, clubs. And so that'll be kind of our focus here in the spring. But in regards to what we are aiming for and what we're planning for in the future for next year, is to be able to name and have cohorts, cohort of teachers. So another example would be, we're looking at the core teachers, supported by special ed and multilingual, that they would have a team time, the teachers, to be able to really do the planning, looking at the data, more so than what we're able to in our existing operating body. And so those are just two examples, transitioning that's happening now, and team time by providing all students in particular cohorts for the upcoming year.
So kind of a hybrid between middle school and high school team. Got it.
Yes.
Thank you. And then Principal Ron, you got me thinking about, you know, future, the video got me thinking about the future plans of students. Is there any way that you and your team track where your students land after they graduate outside of sleds?
Not outside of sleds, no, but it is something that we've talked about at, we have an informal process because one of the things about Boz is that the connection students have with teachers, that they let us know where they're going, but we don't have a formal process. But that is something that we've always wanted to develop, how to track where they are going.
And being able to, you know, how great it would be to, and maybe this is happening, I don't know, but have them come back, you know, as, and, you know, testimonials for current students and, you know, this is where I was when I was here, and here is where I am now, and, you know, all of that. But thank you both very much. This was, I love hearing the student voice. It's always really helpful, and I know we always talk about, you know, how great, we love hearing from staff, and at the same time, hearing from students and families is really enriching too. So thank you.
Yes, thank you, Cody, so much for your firsthand account and your comments and questions. It's very important to see and to hear firsthand, you know, the comments that you're all making, which is very, I'm just so pleased with all the pathway things that Burnsville High School is doing. And I'm also very proud of the parent conferences that you said that people are really, you know, engaging in, because in my past history, people weren't so engaged. So it's, that really makes me feel good that parents are getting more engaged in that. So, and, oh, Ninth Grade Academy, it was really good hearing about that. I'm glad, that testimonial, that would be so awesome if that is something that could happen maybe in the previous years to come. That would be awesome. And then my last comment is, please let us know about this, you said, I believe you said it was the first year for the PBI program and how that turns out.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely.
That would be awesome.
Yep. The high school has been a part of the cohort, I think it was cohort maybe nine, they're up to cohort 17 from the state. And so at one point, Burnsville High School was a part of that. And now we are providing the jumper cables and providing that second opportunity. And so, yeah, absolutely, providing some updates with that if there's a need.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. Thank you for all being, for being here and all your hard work, participation for our kids.
Appreciate the presentation. The one thing that made my ears ring is something that I work with professionally, and that was restorative justice. And really love the circles. I mean, I find it's ways that we're doing so many things and so many different activities to build community, but centering it in restorative practices is huge, especially building that relationship of trust with staff and student and students amongst each other. It helps alleviate or bring down behaviors or maybe conflicts. It's a way for conflict resolution, which is enormous skill that all of us need to hone and evolve, as well as when incidents has happened, of creating that circle of support for the student to reconvene and rejoin the community is such a huge thing. And I love to see, seeing it at Boz, I would love to see it implemented in the whole district, you know, like maybe the high school's next and then like middle school, you know. So really, very supportive. A program that I work with, it's something we're training, teaching fellows that want to be future teachers in that practice. So it's something that, love to hear that we're doing it here.
Thank you, Chair Miller, Directors of the Board, Director Chester. We are becoming a restorative practices district this summer, a key component of our Leadership Academy. We had two staff members present about how you use restorative practices. One is, you mentioned for justice, but also community building, you heard that from a staff member, and also for repair of harm. If you remember, a few years ago, our high school students were actually trained in circles, and so student agency, and so we are bringing it district-wide, and so really to provide that training on restorative practices.
I also wanted to just thank you guys for coming. I always enjoy these presentations and all the work that you guys put into it, and I love hearing the, from the students. Also want to mention, I have a ninth grader, I'm going to have a ninth grader next year, so I'll be curious to hear his. So I'll be curious to hear his feedback on, you know, his experience. Maybe next year you can bring a ninth grade student and they can comment on how their, you know, transition went in this, you know, with the new Ninth Grade Academy. And, you know, we can have, hear firsthand, you know, from their perspective, how that impacted their transition from middle school to high school. Also just wondering, I know there are so many things that we're doing at the high school. I didn't hear anything mentioned about the Sine Foundation. Are we still doing the mentors with the Sine?
We talked about yesterday at our principal report, right Danielle? We talked a little bit about that.
Yes, it is still present within the high school.
Okay, great. So just really enjoyed your presentations and just thank you for coming.
Okay, well, I should go too?
Leave the circle.
I want to, I just want to, everybody has already said everything, but this report was really a wholesome. I was really touched by the video from the BOS students, you know, just, especially the environment, because not every student thrives in every environment. So finding their environment and the district providing that environment for them is really crucial. And I just have a quick question for Principal Sandoval. On the parents, like the information nights, the PTO, the conferences and stuff, are the parents getting information regarding pathway? I know the students are like getting that information, but is it getting to the parents?
I appreciate you that question. Yes, so February 5th, when I mentioned that, that is specifically geared towards families. And so for our incoming ninth grade parents, we're having both an evening at the high school and then also an evening at each middle schools. Because it was important for us to not only just assume that families would come to the middle school to hear about the high school, but not be present at the high school. So we wanted to offer up both opportunities. And so, yes, that day would be for the high school, when we're opening up our doors and providing a specific to current eighth grade families, an opportunity for them to hear about the high school.
Thank you.
We really thank Director Mursal, thank you for that question. It reminds me that we talk a lot as principals about the rule of 21. The first seven times you hear something, you, it doesn't mean much to you. The second seven times, you might consider what that person is saying. And then that third seven times, you start to internalize it and take ownership over it. So we're trying to take that same approach with our eighth graders. I guess, I don't know if the rule of 21 or higher for eighth graders, but we're going to take that approach of trying to be immersive with understanding pathways, both families and students.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, thank you to the peripheral speakers that are here tonight, those of you who are still here. And the students, I certainly understand why they had better things to be doing. But please pass along our gratitude and appreciation of what it took for them to come forward and speak tonight. They did excellent jobs. Principals Ron and Sandoval, thank you both for you, both of you, the preparation you put into tonight. It's very clear on, you know, it came through very clearly in your reports. Principal Sandoval, I was sitting in the middle of your thing, just kind of thinking, I said, shoot, he's only like half a school year into the job, right? I mean, that's, you know, having witnessed many leaders at your level that you are doing, I mean, it would probably been honestly okay for you to say, I'm still getting my feet wet here. But you came in like you've been doing this for years, and so I really appreciate that. It's very obvious you have jumped right in. You're not, you know, a loud demonstrative leader. So I, I hadn't really paid much attention to what you've been doing so far, and this is amazing. I had clear that you're really in the weeds and working very hard at your job, so we really, really appreciate it. And Principal Ron, I have a quick question about the virtual reality, or virtual academy we're running. So it is founded on like technology and having this, you know, virtual connection and everything. And I'm wondering, how are we sort of keeping an eye on technology? And guess, you know, with all the stuff you're doing with BOS and Virtual Academy and the workload you have between all of that, I'm wondering if, is there some time dedicated to kind of, what's, because technology comes on us so fast and things change so quickly? And is, how are you balancing it just being the vehicle from which we're delivering that to we're sort of moving to the next phase or exploring something new, whether it's virtual reality or whatever things might come down the line? And I think at some point, somebody mentioned AI, but...
I think having dedicated staff, now we can dedicate professional development time for learning different tools to use virtually. I have been in, the middle school is synchronous, so I'm in the classrooms a lot. I am amazed, and I know that we're going to be doing some walkthroughs in the district into the classrooms. At the level of technology, the teachers are, they're all new to full-time virtual teaching too, other than the years everyone spent learning virtual teaching. So we're hearing from them as they meet collaborative, what they, collaboratively, what they would like to see and how we can better serve the students and what kind of technology or programs we need to use that are different than you wouldn't use in person. So we're trying to use teacher experience right now to identify what those are. As far as, I don't know how familiar you are with Securely. If you, that is a huge tool, it's a huge tool in the classroom, but it's also a huge tool in middle school Virtual Academy to send messages directly to students. Because you can't, you can see what they're doing on their computer. You obviously can't see them, because a lot of students in seventh and eighth grade do not have their cameras on. So having Securely is definitely that instructional tool that gets students to become engaged, like you would walk by a desk in the classroom and say, no, let's work on this. Securely does, it's instrumental for us to be able to be using that in middle school.
Good, okay. Great, well, thank you again to everyone for your presentation tonight, it's wonderful, thank you. All right, next on our agenda is to receive a report about the fiscal year 2024 revised budget from Tyler Dunn, Director of Finance. Welcome, Tyler.
Good evening, Chair Miller, Dr. Batt, all members of the board. This evening, I will provide the board and community with updated financial information and bring forward a recommendation to the board for approval of the fiscal year 2024 revised budget. The agenda for tonight's presentation, where does the district funding come from? What restrictions are there on district spending? How does the district spend its money, and what is the current situation? First, we will look at revenue and where the district funding comes from. General fund revenue totals just over $160 million. Sixty-five percent is state aid at over $104 million. Property taxes is the next largest at 24% or almost $38 million. This graph shows how the Gen Ed formula allowance is not kept up with inflation. The difference for FY24 is $1,282 per pupil. That would be an additional $10.5 million this year alone. So what restrictions are there? General fund capital is the annual allocation that can only be used for personnel and equipment per state statute. Title funds is federal money designated for specific purposes such as needs associated with high poverty rates. The voter-approved technology level is levy, is specifically for technology, personnel, and equipment. And then we also have different funds, such as the Community Education and Food and Nutrition Services Funds. Now we will look at all the, at the general fund expenditures by the object code or the type of expense. Total expenses are $153,581. Seventy-six percent or over $116 million is spent on salaries and benefits of our staff. Fifteen percent or over $23.5 million is contracted services. $10 million of that is the amount we spend on transportation. Next, we will look at the same expenditures by program or purpose. Seventy-five percent or $114.5 million is instruction and instructional support. The next largest category is maintenance services at over $17 million or 11%, which includes the long-term facilities maintenance projects. This slide shows the remaining federal pandemic relief funds. $8.7 million remains. Eight and a half million are expected to be spent in the general fund. And $200,000 is expected to be spent between the food service funds and the community service funds. This table shows the general fund staff by bargaining group. The teachers is the largest group, 70% of the costs at almost $75 million. And then there's a link at the bottom there to the bargaining unit descriptions. Here's a current list of the unfunded mandates from the last legislative session. Summer unemployment for hourly non-licensed staff, which is currently funded until the state allocation runs out. We did nine-month clerical staff change to 12-month employees. The cost to administer application for educational benefits is now a general fund cost instead of a food and nutrition cost. Additional student data privacy measures and so on. All these add up to $520,000 and counting. We will likely see most of these costs each year going forward. This table shows the audited fund balance from June 30th, '23. Revenue and expenditure budgets for all funds leading to the projected fund balance at June 30, 2024 of $74,806,109 for all funds. Here's the current reality of the general fund updated to reflect the revised budget on the far-right column there. The unassigned fund balance jumps up to $28.5 million, which is an 18.56% unassigned fund balance percentage. And reminder, board policy is 8%. Other resources linked in the presentation are the Budget Unit Summer Report with a comparison to the adopted budget and the list of staff by site and by budget unit. Later this evening, I will be back to bring forward the recommendation to approve the FY24 budget revision. And probably as early as tomorrow, we will start looking at the FY25 budget with these approved revisions and assumptions.
Okay. All right, thank you, Director Dunn. Any comments or questions from board members?
I have a clarifying question.
Certainly.
So under the 2023 Legislative Mandates Funding Gap slide, you had mentioned that it'll, like, these things will still be in play in years to come. I just wanted to question whether or not we would still have attorney fees for school resource officers, MOU, and a Burnsville High School dean if we get our SROs back in the school.
I can take that one. Thank you, members of the board, Director Chester. Yes, that's a great point. A caveat to Director Dunn's comment. If the legislature continues as it is, then it would, but we have a session coming up, but the primary focus is really bonding. They will have some other items such as clarification for the school resource officer. And so it is dependent on that, but you're right. We'll see if we, if they take care of that early in the session, we hope. So thank you for that.
Any other? Director Trisher, anything else?
No.
Okay, anybody else?
Just wanted to express gratitude. Thank you for the work that went into, this is kind of ramping up into a busy season for you and your team. And appreciate all the time that's already gone into this and that will continue to go into it, so thank you.
Anybody else? I would echo that. Thank you very much for the time you spent on this and hanging around this evening to bring this board to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will move to Board Committee Appointments and School Assignments Reports. We'll start with our standing committees. We'll just start with the Legislative Committee.
Yes, the Legislative Committee has an item on under new business tonight in terms of approving the new 191 legislative platform for this year. So more to come.
Excellent. Policy?
Well, we will be getting our meetings scheduled pretty soon, so we will share some more information.
Excellent. And negotiations?
Thank you, Chair Miller. Yes, negotiations met yesterday, Wednesday, January 24th. The committee continues to go work through language items with the BEA. And we had deep listening last night with topics for us to process and consider. And we'll continue to look forward to another meeting in February to be determined.
All right. Then I'll now open it up to other appointments.
We had our meeting for, excuse me, AMSD on January 5th. The speakers were Lana Peterson and Marie Lee and Eric Villett, who had to talk from his car because he had an accident. But anyway, the focus was on the grant for state and local programs to improve the pathways for education, careers, and attainment. So she just talked a lot about the improvement they want to make for college prep, starting from K all the way through 12th grade and beyond, and then the strategies and the vision and the recommendations and expenditures with all of that. So I won't go into any more detail, and you can of course find these more details on the AMSD site. And then, yeah, and then they talked about some data. So that's my report from AMSD.
All right. Any other committee or school reports to share?
One for Intermediate District 917. We had met the second Tuesday of this month, I'm sorry, the date escapes me. And at that meeting, we had approved the temporary employee report. We also approved, because this, this week is paraprofessional week. And so the 917 adopted a proclamation and resolution, so that was done. Also, memorandum of understanding and resolutions for sick and safe leave was also adopted for the different bargaining units in which that language hasn't been put in yet. And then we also approved the 2023-2025 teachers contract. Also underway, the four metro area intermediate districts are also adopting their own legislative platform too, with topics being, of course, funding the cross-subsidy for special ed, eliminating district fiscal responsibilities for student in care or treatment facilities who are wards of the state, support intermediate teacher apprenticeship initiatives, allow districts to hold in reserve, student support aid are the four priorities that they are bringing forward as a unified intermediate districts.
Yes, Carol?
Just a brief update on the Burnsville Festival and Fire muster. After a couple months hiatus, we are now scheduling out this year's meetings to plan the September's event. And I will keep everyone apprised of our progress.
Excellent. Anybody else, have anything else? Okay. That then concludes the information portion of our meeting tonight. We will now move to the business portion of our meeting, and we will start by approving the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold a discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do any board members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda tonight? No, I'm not going to remove anything, but I do just want to point out for anybody listening that we have inside the consent agenda, our restructure of committee assignments and board appointments. So, anybody interested in that list would find it inside the consent agenda. Okay. So, is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt. Seconded by Director Connor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion does carry unanimously. We will now move to new business. First item under new business is to approve the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four revised budget which is presented by, again, by Tyler Dunn, Director of Finance. Welcome back.
Good evening again. Each fiscal year, the budget is revised to reflect the most current information available with respect to revenues and expenditures. This recommendation formally recognizes these amendments to the revisions by incorporating them into the budget document. Revisions have been made in all governmental funds. The recommendation is that the Board of Education approves the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four revised budget, providing all funds revenues of two hundred and eight million, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars, and all funds expenditures of two hundred and three million, three hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation as put in front of us?
So moved.
Moved by Director Warb.
Second.
Seconded by Director Marissa. Is there any discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The motion carries unanimously. All right. Next is that we are being asked to approve the secondary course catalog presented by Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent and Principal Jesus Sandoval. Welcome back, both of you.
Thank you again, Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Battle. Principal Sandoval and I are here to recommend that the Board of Education approve the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five secondary high school course catalog. The catalog was presented by Principal Sandoval and Associate Principal Noble at our board meeting on January eleventh, and it featured additions and deletions and changes for this upcoming school year.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Marissa and seconded by Director Connor. Is there any discussion on the motion in front of us? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
You. All right. The last item under new business tonight is to approve the one ninety-one legislative platform, and it will be presented by Director Chester.
Yes, thank you. So, the legislative committee, and thanks to Aaron and Dr. Battle, and with information and influence from the legislative platforms from both AMSD and MSBA, and also reviewing our our former legislative platform, too, we are presenting a new updated one, taking into consideration some of the legislative changes that have occurred that might have implications to our district, as well as maintaining some that we are still finding as our priority as a district in terms of benefiting our students. So, one is, of course, we want to have the cross subsidy funded, creating a permanent state funding stream for unemployment insurance for non-licensed employees, provide additional funding to reimburse districts for implementation and training expenses related to early adoption of evidence-based reading curriculum, the the Read Act, and then also removing barriers so all students and families can succeed. So, removing that fifteen-day residency requirement for students enrolled in online schools, in particular with our VA program. Continue Medicaid eligibility as a means of direct certification for students to qualify for educational benefits and make funding permanent to whole districts harmless for loss of compensatory aid with the free lunch implementation that has occurred. Provide funding to increase access to school-based pre-kindergarten programs, including licensed or certified childcare, creating safe school environments that support all students. So, increasing safe schools funding to expand mental to mental health supports, enhance support for programs that address staff shortages and help increase diversity among teachers, including the grow our own grants and short-call substitute teaching program and provide improved clarity, including clear guidelines and improved definitions related to school resource officers' use of physical restraints in schools. So, it is our recommendation from the committee that we adopt. This is our legislative platform for this year.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt.
Second.
Seconded by Director Warb. Is there any further discussion on this matter?
Just want to thank, just want to thank the committee and and Dr. Battle and team for the time and effort to pull this together. It's, I think it's a really good statement from from the district.
And if once, if approved, we highly encourage our community members to utilize this in reaching out to your legislators on the behalf of our students in our district.
Excellent. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The motion carries unanimously. This then concludes new business for this evening, and next on our agenda is a work session to receive an overview of student support services. I move that we take a brief recess and return to this agenda item at eight fifty-five. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Second, Director Chester. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Please return to the days at eight fifty-five to begin the work session.
Student Support Services and Dr. Jennifer Midendorf and Dana Thompson, Student Support Services Supervisors. Thank you for joining us this evening. Thank you for sticking around for this.
(laughing) It's our pleasure. All right, looks like we're going here. All right, sounds good. Okay. Well, good evening, Chair Miller, Dr. Battle, and Directors of the Board. I am here with Dr. Jennifer Midendorf and Dana Thompson to provide the Board an overview of Student Support Services. And to control the power. Student Support Services encompasses many areas, including special education, mental health services. Our vision is to support every student holistically. Tonight, we will be providing an overview of special education. We will highlight the innovative programming in our buildings, health services, and provide an update on community partnership, which includes mental health services and future planning moving forward. This graph, this graph provides a representation of the school district's declining enrollment. As you can see, our enrollment is declining, declining through the district. However, Special Education Services numbers remain steady.
So there are 13 different categories that students can meet criteria for specialized service in Minnesota. I like to think of it as like 13 doors to one room, since we serve students' needs, not their category. The numbers you see in this graphic are the total number of students with IEPs in each grade. And I'll point out a couple of things here quick. The PK numbers look pretty inflated. But that's because those numbers do include all students in our early education, both the community ed and our special ed. And the senior numbers, similarly, include our 12th grade students, as well as students who have completed 12th grade but are still working towards graduation. The, another interesting fact you might see is that 4th and 5th grade numbers being elevated. Those were our students who were kindergarten and first grade during the pandemic. And so we're continuing to see ripple effects of that moving forward. These numbers were all pulled earlier this month from Viewpoint.
Staffing continues to be a challenge for Student Support Services. School psychologists, speech-language pathologists, highly-qualified educational assistants, and nurses have been the most difficult positions to fill thus far. To meet those challenges, we partner with universities to get student teachers into the district in hopes to hire them right out of college. Historically, by providing a positive student teaching experience, they will consider 191 before any other school district. We are also contracting with outside agencies to provide, to fill those open positions. To improve our retention of new teachers, we piloted a mentoring program three years ago, and it continues today. Through coaching from lead mentors, support from our individual-assigned mentors, teachers, as well as regular check-ins from our supervisors, we have seen a reduction of first-year teachers leaving the district. Last year, special education, special education retained 15 out of the 18 teachers that we hired. To improve our candidate pool, our goal this year is to get out front of other districts and post early. We are also looking at recruiting candidates from other countries who are highly qualified and come with excellent experience. This year, at William Burn, we piloted a program that increased the number of special education teachers and added a registered behavior technician, and decreased the number of educational assistants in the resource program. By providing additional licensed staff, it lowered the caseload for our resource teachers. This allowed for more instruction to happen in the general education environment through push-in services and similar groups, and smaller groups with smaller, with individualized instruction. The graph on the chart shows how providing services, both in pull-out and push-out, students are able to help generalize their skills into the general education. The registered behavior technician, under the direction of a board of certified behavior analysts, created an intervention focused on decreasing the time outside of the general education classroom. Coping skills, such as taking deep breaths, counting, and affirmation statements, were taught in the moment. This direct instruction provided the registered behavior technician allowed the students to get the just-in-time intervention when they needed it. The blue bar shows the average number of minutes students were spending outside of the classroom before the intervention was put into place. The red shows the average number of minutes students are currently spending outside of the classroom. The graph on the right is another visual that demonstrates the effectiveness of the intervention. Each vertical line is when a student was added to the intervention. So the intervention started with five students. It currently has 10 students in the intervention, and we are still showing minimal time outside of class.
Good evening, Chair Miller, Dr. Battle, and Directors of the Board. The Adaptive FIA Department for the district has been working towards unified physical education classes following the Special Olympics Unified Model. And these pictures show students at Sky Oaks Elementary having fun when all students are included. And this is an example of a pre-K class.
Our typical attendance procedures follow a pretty strict sequence of events. Much of it is dictated by county procedures. At three unexcused absences, the teacher or social worker communicate with the family in whatever way works best for them. When the student reaches four unexcused absences, a form letter is sent, and the social worker reaches out to the family to come up with an attendance plan. At seven unexcused absences, the attendance is reported to the county. And ideally, the county then works with the family in providing resources to help address the root cause of the unexcused absences. The process can feel impersonal and somewhat rigid. Sarah Parker, one of our many amazing social workers, has taken on the challenge of improving student attendance in her school.
Hi, my name is Sarah Parker, and I'm the school social worker at Edward Mill Elementary School. A lot of our schools have, have tried and are also incorporating PBIS. And that really is, attendance can be a PBIS, with PBIS, excuse me, using PBIS strategies. So things that we have included in our attendance, like trying to keep those numbers to decrease in a good way, is, you know, incentives, right? So if we want a behavior to change, and that can be something like attendance, and we know our families are going through multiple factors, and sometimes they're going through things that, that comes first, and we know that, so partnering with those families, but also a student feeling like, hey, you just got to school, here's some, here's some All-Star tickets. And then they get to build that and feel like, wow, they're noticing that I'm here, they're noticing I'm at school. And now, not only that, but I get to have my name drawn for a prize. So the incentives and the, using those same, you know, positive behavior enforcement, right, intervention, to also get their attendance to improve as well. Something else is we've done affirmation statements. So I've had a few students who it's just having them, and their self-esteem and their confidence of being a student, and, you know, talking to themselves when they get here, and having just literally a list that says, I am somebody, I have grades, I am smart, I belong. And so I've, that's also been a strategy that has been used is every single time they would get here, they would read those statements. And it's different for each student, too. We've tried, you know, people know check-in, check-out, so that, you know, tier-two intervention. We have students that it's just, you know, their, that anxiety in that coming to school and leaving home and leaving mom or dad, or aunt or uncle, whoever takes care of them. And it's made a switch, just that feeling of, okay, I get my points if I'm here, and I, and I get to go check in with that, that teacher that thinks I'm important. And how much that student, or those students we've tried that with, their attendance has completely changed just because of, we put five minutes in a day for them to feel important. And finally, just teaching a skill, just like we would teach math or reading. It's the same concept, right? If I don't know what a routine looks like, or I'm not taught how to set an alarm clock, or what my routine should be when I get up, or not being on my video games, or something like that. It's, what should our, let's write it down, let's write down the steps. Oh, we got an alarm clock donated, great, let's practice how to set it. So also, skill building and actually teaching skills that when they go to middle school and high school, they already have that fundamental, you know, routine already started. Because like I said before, our parents, our families are doing the best they can. And that's the part that's, that kind of just to wrap this all up, I try to put everything in there and go fast, I don't know how long, but. It is, it really starts with our families and us working together.
So the, the procedures I listed above are dictated by county. We don't have a lot of leeway there, but what Sarah's demonstrated is that we can do so much within those restrictions.
Oh, oh.
There's steps we take, but we have to meet that whole child and teach that skill, meet those needs.
Okay, now I don't know how to make this.
The chart, Dana, the chart?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. The chart demonstrates, shows the number of students who had three or more unexcused absences. If you recall, that's kind of the step of the process when it comes to the county reporting, that's the first letter. So in 2020, December '22, that blue graph shows how many students in each grade read with the implementation of the strategies. And this is the first year of implementation. Already shows that significant reduction.
All right, so during what I need time at Eagle Ridge Middle School, students who need extra support in the area of reading work specifically with the special education teacher and work towards their IEP goals. And within the model, students are able to participate in the general education English language arts class, and then also get individual instruction for their IEP goals for the 30 minutes during the win time using the SIPs intervention. Our fall-to-winter data from the curriculum-based measurement assessment using FastBridge is, is shown in that graph on the slide. Data from 10 student scores are shown in the chart. The blue line represents the fall scores, and the red line represents the winter score. So you can see how the scores went up in their reading proficiency.
We have this practical assessment exploration system at the high school. We call it the PACE Lab. The PACE Lab allows students to demonstrate their work-ready skills, and it provides data to teachers about student needs. Our goal is to make every student real-world ready, and the PACE Lab is a powerful tool in that mission. Ryan Walker and Jake Knox both teach in our neurobiological-focused program at BHS. And they shared, and I'm going to quote them here. "We've certainly enjoyed how PACE has provided the opportunity to simulate real-world employment scenarios that we cannot create in a classroom setting. It has given our students great insight into possible careers, jobs that they may not have otherwise known about. It has been a good way for them to discover what they enjoy and what they dislike. When a student enters that lab, it becomes a simulated work environment. They're now the employee, and the teacher is a supervisor. And they learn to follow normal workplace rules like clock in and out. Sometimes they'll have a badge to sign in and badge to sign out. They will then do a task, the supervisor is a supervisor, not a teacher, but will help as needed. This gives them the chance to demonstrate these skills, and when they need extra instruction, then receive it. And so when they get out to the workplace, they've learned it."
The Health Services Department ensures that the school environment is a healthy space for students to learn. Taking on a proactive initiative, the Health Services Department continues to collaborate with outside agencies to provide vaccination clinics in the district so uninsured families have access to medical care. Students at the elementary and middle school will have access to dental care and sealant program through the Minnesota Department of Health Initiative from the spring. As a district, we continue to follow the guidelines of the CDC and the Minnesota Department of Health, asking families to keep their children home if they are not feeling well, and to monitor for worsening symptoms. Although this does impact attendance, we learned through the pandemic, the import, the impact on attendance is much greater if illness is not contained and is allowed to spread. And then, of course, communicating, the communication and partnering with families to provide education around the resources and management of their students' health conditions.
Amy, did you skip Project Search? What happened to it?
I don't know, disappeared.
We're going backwards.
Oh, okay, sorry.
It's in the version up on the workbook.
Oh, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, yeah. I don't know where it dropped off from.
You can, you should talk about it.
Talk about it.
I'm like, I was surprised.
All right, so Project Search is an internship program for students with intellectual development cognitive disabilities ages 18 through 22, who are in their last year of transition programming. And the program was started in 1996 at the Cincinnati Children's Hospital. And it was developed specifically for people with disabilities. And they have sites all around the world. I believe it's 44, but I, I don't quote me on that. So our 191 students, who are in the best transition program, are participating in the new Project Search site that is at Fairview Ridges in Burnsville. And it provides them with experience of working in a real-work environment, and helps to build their communication, collaboration, and problem-solving skills, all the while they're working on those transferable job skills. So in order for students to participate in the internship, they went through the application and interview process prior to beginning the internship. They are supported by our best work coordinator and also one of our job coaches. And the goal is for the interns to obtain competitive, integrative employment after completing the internship. So in addition to working, they also participate in employment planning meetings that include the intern themselves, their parent or guardian, the work coordinator, job coach, vocational rehabilitation counselor, the social worker from the county, and their job placement provider. And again, this, this opportunity provides them the time to really look at the, the intern's strengths, and then areas that they maybe need to work on strengthening before they finish. And then they also focus on that long-term planning for employment. And in the pictures, you'll see our students in action, if you have it on yours. You'll see them in action, and then the, the beginning of the internship, the picture of them in their scrums. So it's been exciting.
This is an incomplete list of our community partners. For the last several years, I've had the honor and privilege of supervising much of our mental health efforts in the district. And you met Sarah, one of our incredible social workers. They are all that incredible, and they all do amazing work, but the need is growing. And so to help meet that need, we've met with many of our community partners and have some pretty innovative things. I want to highlight just two of these. First is Carisolus. It's an agency that works with our families in finding them mental health and other related appointments. As, if you've ever tried to make an appointment, a new one, finding a new provider that's taking clients or has an appointment, it could take months, it could take weeks, it could take several phone calls. And it's quite a lot of time, and, and your own personal agency. And we find that's not really an equitable process on finding all of our families that support. What Carisolus does is it works with the family and then does all that communication for them. And they're often able to find appointments several months earlier than if they were doing it on their own. So far this year, Carisolus has made over 3,000 communications in total on behalf of our families. They have made 29 appointments throughout our schools and more coming. The other one I want to highlight is 360 Communities, which is an existing partner, but they have a new program called the Local Homeless Prevention Aid. What this does is working with our McKinney Ventil families. They have some criteria around it, so the ones who maybe have a job, but just not a place to live, and they help them find housing. So they work around the community, they work with that family on where they want to live, what they want to look for, and they just have all these resources to find things a family might never be able to. They work with many of our surrounding districts, and I'm proud to say, 191 has made by far the most referrals and utilize this more than any other district around us. So far this year, they've housed eight families.
So looking ahead, next year, while continuing on with this year and moving forward into next year, we will continue with our literacy instruction for special education teacher using the READ Act and working with CISA. We'll do ongoing due process training for all of our teachers. We're going to expand some pilots, and so the elementary literacy interventions with Spire and UFLI, we'll continue on with that. We've also started a secondary reading steering committee to go through the exact same process that our elementary teachers already have done. And then to continue to look and train and certify registered behavior technicians to be able to provide those on-time services and interventions when the students need it. I want to thank Dana and Jennifer for coming up here, and I would like to thank everyone of you for giving us the opportunity to talk about Student Support Services. And it has been a pleasure working with you. This ends our report.
Okay, thank you. Board members, comments and questions?
Just wanted to tell you, I think it's really great what you're doing. I am so happy that there, that you're focusing on a lot of the teaching skills as far as employment and those type of skills. I also would like to see, hopefully in the future, that we're concentrating on the whole child as far as living skills. So handling stress at home, social skills, that type of thing, because that's kind of where it all starts. And, you know, also things like doing their laundry and, I mean, because some, I mean, some learn on their own, but it'd be nice for some people to be taught that also. Finances, you know, checking, budgeting, that type of thing. I don't know if you already have that, I haven't heard anything, so just.
I can speak to that. So in the transition program, and at the high school, too, we do work on all those areas. So in the Students' Individual Education Plan, there are three areas that we really focus on. One being employment, one being post-secondary training, and one being independent living skills. And so that's kind of the umbrella for the laundry and the financing and all that. And so here, we've been. And so here, we've been lucky enough for our BEST students to learn how to do laundry. We have washer and dryer and so they, they learn that. And there's a lot of things with that, you know, when we think of students doing their laundry, you know, putting it in the washer, putting it in the dryer, but there's so many more skills that come along with that. How do you measure, you know, how do you, when do you go and get it out and put it, you know, and, and then the folding and putting away? So definitely work on all that, the budgeting, finances, the coffee shop. Yeah, they go shopping, they go shopping and they do their checkout. And, and then of course in the coffee shop, they're learning a lot about the, the money and the county money and then the reconciling at the end of the day and, and doing all that with the cash register and, and then making deposits, so.
And I'd like to share something that I.
That's good, so good to hear. The only other thing I, I didn't hear was about family and maybe self-help responsibility as far as not rushing to be, to be responsible for anyone but yourself till you're mentally and financially responsible so that you're not creating another life that you're responsible for, that you're not ready to be responsible for. Hopefully you touch on that too.
We also do a program, it's called Healthy Relationships, and it works on that. And, and again, you know, really focusing on the student learning more about themselves and where they want to go as themselves without thinking about that next step of trying to raise others.
If I could share something that's happening this week that I'm really excited about, our step program at the high school, which is one of our focus programs. On Monday, they talked about cooking and making a meal. On Tuesday, they had a professional chef zoom in and give a little Q and A and talk about it. Wednesday, they planned a meal and today they took the van to Cub Foods and bought the groceries for their meal. Tomorrow, they're going to cook it together. So it's from start to finish in a week, talking about, and it's good community building as well. And they're going to eat that meal, it's going to be pretty fun. And our neurobiological program is doing the same thing.
Awesome. They don't still care around mechanical babies, do they? I didn't think so, I just didn't hear about that.
They do the flower babies at the high school.
I know some states still do that, I didn't think we did, I didn't hear anything about it, so I was just curious.
Yeah, Director Connor, I just want to, I want to add on that as part of a due process and legislation, we are required for every special education student to have those post-secondary skills built into their IEPs. And it's dependent upon what the families and the students' goals are moving forward. And so every single student at the IEP meeting addresses as to where their needs are. Some students, their goal is to go to post-secondary, some students, it is to become a professional football player maybe. But regardless, our goal is to get them to, give them the skills to be able to be adults after they graduate from school.
And hopefully not just special ed students, all students, I hope. Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your report.
Go ahead, it's a work session, jump in.
Dana, you were talking about 360 Communities and homelessness and helping families. Can you speak to how we might help individual students that might be homeless? Is there a, I'm sure there's probably a branch under our umbrella for that?
Yeah, well, our McKinney Vento programming is pretty robust. Students are identified through work with the social workers. And when they're identified as homeless or highly mobile, they have some rights guaranteed to them by the state, mainly around transportation, that they can continue going to the same district that they serve in. We go well beyond that. We have, some examples are, we have stockpiles of winter clothing, we have backpacks, we have food supplies. We have gift cards to Cub, we have gift cards to gas stations that families are able to take out. We work really closely with referring them to county services that can help them with many of the things they're looking for. What we do with each family is pretty individualized because sometimes it's a family that's, you know, just moved here from out of country. Sometimes it's a temporary loss of home, sometimes it's a eviction. Recently, we had a family who had a threat of eviction and our social worker worked with the county, like immediately, on the phone immediately, got that eviction delayed and then partnered with our 360 partners who work with truancy lawyers, or not truancy, our eviction lawyers, who met them at the courthouse, and right now that family is still in housing.
And the students?
One second though Dana, can you also talk about the phone program that we're implementing? That is something that's new also this year.
Yeah, it's in one of our new partnerships, with T-Mobile actually. And so, you know, we have the hotspots. They offer us, basically it's a hotspot, but it's a cell phone. And so we can offer it to students and our priority is our unaccompanied youth. And so that gives them essentially an Android phone, they have freedom over it. I mean, we have the basic things we have to restrict around like pornography and violence, but they can still have a lot of freedom within it. That gives them access to calling jobs, to do whatever they need to do, that, you know, and basically to have a phone for their social life, which is part of being a human. We also have the opportunity to preload apps on it, so there's a button that's, that's for grocery services. There's a button that gives you in contact with your school, there's another one that does transportation, yep. And we can even push out new things if they come. And so those are all provided free of cost to these students.
And in terms of the unaccompanied minors who are homeless, I mean, and helping them find, find housing?
Yeah, we, we do as much as we can. This is an area where like the Vento funding that we get doesn't cover nearly what we're doing. But we're, like, these are our students, we need them to be in school. And we understand that if you don't have a place to sleep that night, academics take a backseat. So as student support services, that means we support students holistically, everywhere. So we're always looking for ways to improve how we can help. That's why the community partnership grow and changes throughout the years. And, you know, we do have quite a, quite a lot of families who are, who are homeless. And if you really consider some of the things that their students overcome each day, showing up to school is a huge victory.
Well, and, you know, reading the news, you know, it's not that uncommon for families to, you know, you have both parents working and still.
Yeah, and that's specifically the type of family that 360 Communities is working with. Where, you know, they could probably pay rent if they could find a place that would accept them and that, you know, doesn't have to do the big credit check or whatever it is might be preventing it. And so they help overcome those barriers.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Sounds like you're doing a lot.
Well, it's not me, it's our district, I'm supporting our social workers.
It's good that you're letting us know that, how much we're doing, because I didn't know all those things.
Yeah, and we're, thank you very much. I mean, it's, it's, it's our social work team, our mental health team, our counselors, our teachers, they're all just really incredible at all this stuff.
For the, the programs that have been implemented like at William Byrne and Neil, how are we, are we looking at then implementing those at other schools? Since we know that they're, they're successful?
I am working right now with the principals and having some of those discussions. I am also working with our special education team. And so we've met three or four times, Wendy Drugi and I have been doing meet and confers with our special education teachers to talk about what is going well in special education and what we can do better. And so taking a look at some of the themes that we are, that they are bringing up as some concerns and also helping me solve some of those options. And so that is one of the options that we're looking at as well as a couple others, so. Yep. Thank you for asking.
Yep, you're welcome.
Just one more, one more comment, it just, I'm not sure why it jumped to mind, Amy, but it's just really incredible hearing everything, you know, Tony, I think probably it was your comment that got me realizing how much more we're doing right now compared to, and I'm sorry to do this, guys, but, you know, when I first started on the board, there, there just were eons ahead of where we had been when I was, when I first started serving on this board. And it just, it makes me really proud that we're knowing where our teachers started. You know, hearing the stories in our schools of trying to help our students and our families and knowing that we have these multiple levels of support, that you and your teams are working so hard to help our families and that we have this network of support, it's, it's just awesome.
Thank you. I'm going to be proud of it.
I just wanted to say I'm so impressed with the change in the out-of-school time, out-of-class time that our students in special ed are having. Because personal experience, I think my son missed most of kindergarten in first and second grade. To be two or three grade levels behind. And to just see the improvements and kind of going what you said, our district and special, just in special ed experience is so different from when we started or when my family started here. And I am very thankful for the investment our district has put in this, our emphasis in, in the changes that we have made to really help students feel included in the mainstream classrooms and that part. I just personally thank you because Hunter wouldn't be where he is now if it weren't for your team members.
Thank you. Well, thank you for your presentation and conversation this evening, very informative. I think, you know, the, the idea that calling you support services is too generalistic, there's a lot you do. Everything is peripheral around sort of what would be considered the core part of a district, right? But with, I think to Dana's point, without all the things you guys do, these, that, why would they have time to go to school and learn, right? Because they need the support, so it's, it's interesting, I think, yeah, it's not that you're supporting the district, you're supporting the students. So I really appreciate that. And I also, I mean, we kind of sailed through the, the health services part, not, not intentional, but I'm, I'm, was really happy to see we're fully staffed in health services.
Yes, as of today, as of today.
Especially post-COVID, I'm sure it's been a, you know, that was probably a pretty hard drain on the, on our department. And so that's, that's fantastic. Okay, thank you very much. Have a great evening, thank you.
Thank you.
This then concludes our work session. Next on our agenda, we will move to a closed session to discuss labor negotiation strategy as permitted by state statute section 13D dot 03, followed by an additional closed session to discuss Superintendent Dr. Battle's mid-year evaluation as permitted by Minnesota statute 13D dot 05 subdivision 3A. Is there a motion to close the meeting at this time to discuss labor negotiation strategy?
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester.
Second.
Seconded by Director Wurth, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. This motion carries unanimously. This meeting is now closed and we will move to the Human Resource Conference.